Good evening. If you could all rise with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Mr. Sharpless to lead us through our invocation.
Dear precious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you give to us, Lord. We ask for special protection for our students and our staff and our school sites, and that you give them safe travel mercies as they go to and from schools every day. Please give us the wisdom and discernment to make the decisions-
...that you find most appealing. Your precious name, we pray. Amen.
And I now like to invite Emma Knapp up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Not you, Emma, not quite yet. I have some questions for you. How are you doing today? Good. Could I ask you to pull, yeah, pull down the mic just a little bit for her? Perfect. I have to make sure I can hear your answers. So I hear that you go to school at Oscar J. Pope? Is that correct? Now what grade are you in?
Third grade.
Third grade. So what's your favorite thing about third grade?
We get to do a lot of math.
A lot of math? Very nice. Awesome. Do you know what you want to be when you grow up?
Yes, I want to be a marine biologist.
That's awesome. So... So what is your favorite ocean animal?
Sharks.
Sharks? So are you a big fan of Shark Week?
Yes.
Yes, alright. So what do you like to do in your free time?
I like to paint or draw.
Very nice. We got a little left brain and right brain going on. I like it. It's impressive. So what is your favorite thing about your school?
That we have awesome teachers.
Very nice. Who's your teacher this year?
Ms. Gersler.
Sorry, one more time.
Ms. Gersler.
Ms. Gersler, awesome. So did you bring any guests with you tonight?
Yes, I have my mom, I have my awesome assistant principal, and my old principal, Ms. Gersler. Oh my god, Ms. Gersler.
Awesome. Could you guys all stand and be recognized as well? Well, Emma, thank you so much for coming out and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. We appreciate you giving us some of your time tonight and sharing your talents, and I hope you have the best third grade year ever. And we will see you next time. This meeting for August 22nd, 2023, is now called to order. Our first order of business is to accept the school board agenda. Superintendent Hyde, do we have any revisions?
Madam Chair, at this time there are no revisions.
Thank you, and I will seek a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be our special recognitions, and I will turn it back over to Superintendent Hyde.
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, at this time I'd like to ask school board member Rick Nolte to step down for today's special recognitions. While he transitions, I'd like to ask Reba Coyle, community liaison and director, and Julie Sloan, principal of Southwest Elementary, to please come forward to recognize one of their business partners.
Good evening, Superintendent Hyde and school board members. So I was here back in July with the liaison team, sharing what we do, and we left you that night with a story about a really beautiful partnership. It all started over a simple conversation, simple cup of coffee, and it has flourished into what is now the example of what a true community and school partnership looks like. So I wanted to do, recognize one of our partners, Jen Lay, and have Julie Sloan come up, the principal at Southwest Elementary, to tell you what this partnership has meant to their school and what it has done for Jen Lay as a business owner.
Good evening. We were blessed to have Ms. Reba Coyle assigned to us as our community liaison, and I think one of her amazing things that she does is she's able to know the needs of each of her schools and partner them with businesses that she thinks will be able to help. And we had an amazing first meeting with Jen Lay, and we talked about mentoring and reading with our students, and she kept asking, "What else?" I didn't know what I was allowed to ask for. So I just started telling her different things we had going on at our school, one of which was creating the first career academy. We have a digital production academy now, and when I said that, Jen Lay started crying. And that was her background, and so she was super excited to partner with us on that. We not only had her support in renovating our studio, but more importantly, she has been to our school and mentored our students that are on our television team. She's helped them write scripts, given them camera tips, and then brought in amazing resources from the industry. So our students can see how what they're learning in the digital academy will then could transfer over into a career. She's brought Emmy award winners to speak to our students. She has brought news channel eight cameramen, and I know I'm forgetting some, but come on up. The amazing partnership that she has made with us has just truly supported our students and shown them that there's a possibility for a career path and what they're participating.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing me and my team, the Lay Group. We sell real estate. I didn't know... One, I'm so happy. Thank you for having three community liaisons. I think that it's one of, I mean, everything. I could never be a teacher or do what you guys do. So kudos to all of y'all, but the community liaisons really are like that connecting piece. And so when Reba was like, you know, "Would you adopt the school?", the only thing I wanted to do was be able to see the kids and know the kids and that they knew me mainly because I'm an empty nester now and I needed kids in my life. And so I thank you for that, and I love this school so much. And I wish every business could connect with a school so that everyone can thrive. So that's it.
Thank you. While they get prepared to take their picture, board members, you'll recall, you got to see the video produced by students talking about the program, and it was very powerful, so we're very appreciative. Ms. Miller?
While they're getting ready for their picture, I just want to say that, you know, what Reba does and what she did with this connection is what we want for our school liaisons. We have a lot of reading. If you're not already signed up to read to students or to volunteer, we have multiple opportunities to do that. But to connect the business community with a school that can actually help a particular need, this is exactly what we need in here, so I want to thank the Jen Lay team and Reba for her work in making this connection.
Chair Wyatt?
I just also wanted to mention, we talked a little bit about Inside PCPS earlier, and Jen is one of our newest class members for Inside PCPS class two. So thank you, Jen, for all that you're doing with our students because we know that it means a lot to them. So thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Jeanette Crowley, Director for Strategic Planning and Partnerships, who will recognize the UWCF Champion Award winners for the 2022 district-wide campaign. This is always a highly coveted award. I'm seeing the same face walk through the door. Mr. Van.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school board and Superintendent Hyde for this opportunity. It's always a highlight of the year. Also with me tonight to present is Chantella Masters, Senior Coordinator of Partnerships and Development with the Polk Education Foundation, and Beth Hill, Corporate Philanthropy Manager with United Way of Central Florida. Each year, our school district conducts an employee workplace campaign to support the United Way of Central Florida. For the second year in a row, staff had the opportunity to also donate to the Polk Education Foundation through the Employee Giving Campaign. Funds raised for United Way and Polk Education Foundation are combined and count towards our overall giving to the United Way of Central Florida. The total amount of funds raised for the 2022 campaign year is $76,142, which is an increase from last year, so I think that deserves a round of applause to everybody. And of this amount raised, $19,011 was raised for the Polk Education Foundation. We had 63 schools and 16 departments participate, and Polk County Public Schools ranks number 10 in total giving for United Way of Central Florida out of over 500 companies. Now I'd like Chantel to come say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm here to express our deep gratitude for the ongoing partnership between the Polk Education Foundation, the school district, and the United Way in the Employee Giving Campaign. For the second year, as Jeanette said, we stand together in a unique position as a nonprofit that is an integral part of our school district. We're working tirelessly to uplift our teachers, students, and staff. The contributions garnered from this giving campaign hold the power to transform lives. Through the generous support given, we have been able to drive initiatives such as our scholarship program, reading tutoring program, and the invaluable free teacher market. These endeavors have not only enriched the educational experience for our students, but have provided crucial resources for our school district. Last year, our fruits collected, as Jeanette said, were almost $20,000, and that comes straight back into our school district. This tangible impact underscores the significance of our collaborative work and the potential it holds to betterment of our educational system. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to the school district for affording employees the opportunity to be a part of this noble cause. Together, we are fostering an environment where every individual can thrive, learn, and excel. Thank you.
Now Beth Hill is going to say a few words on behalf of United Way of Central Florida.
Well, thank you so much to the school board and the administration and to Jeanette for hosting us this evening. What an honor it is to be here with you all and to just have a moment to say thank you for your profound involvement in what we're doing at United Way of Central Florida. Your campaign of over $76,000, like Jeanette highlighted, put you solidly in the top 10 of our community supporters along with other organizations like the Sheriff's Department and Wells Fargo and public supermarkets. And so we're so thankful for your support and your continued support over so many years, but specifically these last two years that I've been working with Jeanette on this campaign. And I've had the honor of watching her run such a creative campaign, even our own Superintendent Hyde having some skin in the game this year with the creative Save It or Shave It event that she ran. And we've just seen such a wonderful response from this community. And I just wanted to highlight a little bit of what your dollars have done. So throughout our 2022 campaign, your $76,142 went directly to support the greatest needs in some of our most identified gaps in our community. And in 2022 alone, your donations aided more than 138,302 individuals across more than 60 organizations and agencies. That is a huge deal. Not just working with our children, but with their families and providing their basic needs because we believe that everyone can achieve their full potential, but not everyone has the opportunity. And so we are trying to close those gaps, and you're helping us to make that happen. So thank you. On behalf of those 138,302 families and the children that they represent, we appreciate your support and we appreciate your ongoing work to this community. And thank you to Jeanette for all of the work that you do that I see up close firsthand. And thank you to the school board and to Superintendent Hyde for your support. We appreciate it. We're about to kick off our 2023 campaign, so we're ready. We're gearing up to get started and do this all again. And we expect a wonderful year of continuing to close those gaps and reach out to our community. So on behalf of everyone at United Way, Christina, my CEO, Iliana, our CDMO, and myself, we just want to say a huge thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Now it's my honor to recognize our United Way Champion Award winners. As I announce your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and gift. Our top high school, I'm going to have you all to get in place and help out. You can get in the middle here. Alright, yeah, you can go ahead. Go ahead. Yep, we're going to take a few photos. So our top high school is Lake Gibson High with $4,496, which topped last year. He had a little over $3,100. So I want to say congratulations to Lake Gibson High School and Mr. Van. So Mr. Van, would you like to say a few words?
It's great to be here again. And it's just a wonderful part to be, you know, to be involved in the community, to raise this money for our community, and have such a fun way doing it. We do a lot of cool, creative things to raise this money, and a lot of it involves, you know, having fun with our kids, having fun with our staff. And again, we're honored to be here in order to be a part of United Way. It's not about winning, but it is about winning. And my coordinator, Ms. Melinda Diaz, couldn't be here tonight. Her daughter's got her first volleyball game in Lake Gibson High School, but I want to recognize her because she puts this together for us, and she knows my competitive nature, so she knows we got to win every year. So thank you so much, United Way, school board, for having us tonight. We're honored.
Yeah, you said that. I like the beard. Congratulations, sir.
Our top middle school is Kathleen Middle School with $2,412, which increases from last year. It had over $1,600 last year.
So we are not the Ryan Van, but it's okay. We're catching up. Billy Lay is my coordinator and last year, but unfortunately, he's not with me this year. So we're still going to beat you. I think that our community and our students, everybody, I mean, we rely on the United Way to underwrite so many things for our students so they can be successful, so they can be at school. And I don't know where some of our families would be, especially this past year with all the economic downturn and everything else without United Way. So we do a lot of great things with our students and staff. Not as good as yours, but we're getting there. We're middle school, not high school. And we look forward every year to the competition. So, you want to say anything?
You know, you said every year that you make it up here, but we do too. And I would just like to dig in the data a little bit and see funds per student, funds per adult, because I feel like we're going to catch you somehow.
We're right there. So thank you, everybody.
They are nothing if they're not competitive.
Alright. Our top elementary school is Spessard L. Holland with $5,955, and that is an increase again from last year. And they actually were the highest amount raised. They raised the highest amount overall between any department or any school raised. So Brittany Richards is here with us as their employee coordinator for Spessard L. Holland Elementary.
My principal, Dr. Lacy Golden, apologizes for not being able to make it tonight, but she wrote a few words for us to share with you. Thank you for the recognition. Spessard L. Holland Elementary is dedicated to supporting United Way each year because of the amazing support they give our community. One support we enjoy at our school each year is the Reading Pals. Our volunteers who come in to read to kindergarten students are important to the culture, to the culture we build at Spessard. The students are so excited, and they look forward to the time and attention they receive from our United Way volunteers. Spessard L. Holland will continue to be one of the top supporters of United Way through our annual pledges and our fundraisers because of the importance they hold in our community.
Congratulations.
Our top department, okay, drumroll here, is Office of the Superintendent, who raised $4,251.65. I think it was the Save It or Shave It that did it for them. So I'd like to have Wendy Winchester come down. Mr. Hyde, are you going to come down for this too?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
How much was our total? How much was Van's total?
$4,496.
That just sounds like Mr. Van's going to do Save It or Shave It next year.
For the highest gain in employee participation, they went from the 2021 campaign to the 22 campaign. They had an increase of 85% of employee participation in the campaign. So Valley View Elementary, we have Principal Jennifer Rogers with us here.
We are honored to be recognized. We are looking forward to increasing our employee participation even more this year. Just being here and hearing some of the stories, I would love to ask you afterwards, some different ideas. It's always great to get more ideas. And congratulations to all of you being recognized. And thank you, United Way, for everything that you do for our community and for Valley View. Thank you.
And our last award for this evening is our PCPS Philanthropist of the Year. And so the philanthropist of the year is one of those employees that kind of goes above and beyond, that's been a supporter of the campaign for many, many years. But we would like to recognize Dr. Shirley James, who is Assistant Director with the Fresh Start Program. And before she comes, I want her to come up, but before she speaks, I just want everyone to know that Dr. James has been a consistent giver to United Way since 2002, and she's also been a giver to the Polk Education Foundation for the past 10 years. So her spirit of giving is truly remarkable, and I feel like she is so deserving of this philanthropist of the year award, and want to say congratulations so much.
Well, thank you, and I didn't want to come, but I humbly received this award because I believe it is my duty to contribute to communities and families. And I have done this consistently because it is a part of what I was raised to do, is to give back. And so today, I stand here as a person who has done this in humility, in some concern about what goes on in communities and with families. And I will continue to do so until I can't. Thank you.
Alright, that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that concludes special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments for items on the agenda to be voted upon, as adopted at the start of this meeting. Before we begin, I would like to welcome the public and go over our public comment process and opportunities for this evening. We will have two opportunities for public comment. The first will be for items on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. As always, during this time, comments will be limited to those items on the agenda. At the end of the meeting, we will have an additional opportunity for public comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. To register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time has concluded. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts and comments. This is not a question and answer session. However, if you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office, and we would be happy to have deeper conversations. Before we begin, there is a red line over here, so I will call up the first speaker and then on deck. If you are on deck, if you can please make your way to the red line. We also need to keep the aisles completely clear. So if you are standing in the aisle, you must find a seat or go into the overflow room. First is going to be Douglas, and then on deck is Bobby Dees.
I would just like to speak on Agenda Item 5 of removing proclamations, which first off is just a cowardly solution to this debacle that we've been going through. I would also like to ask Nolte to just not vote, step down. I mean...
That is not an agenda item.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Bobby Dees, and on deck is Kai Moore. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Bobby Dees. I'm from Winter Haven, Florida. I am concerned about the public not knowing about their tax dollars being spent on mental health care in schools. The school board spent millions last month on behavior health, and Lord knows how much before that, and today, another $3 million. Agenda M, Subject 1, Learning Support says the school board will approve contracting out mental health care from Winter Haven Hospital. This is in addition to existing mental health care already provided by schools. You should contract out all mental health care to keep medical records out of schools and have the quality of personnel that are less likely to be influenced by any socialist agenda. Agenda M 3, Learning Support states you want five floating teachers that support behavior health in classrooms, like watchdogs, if you will. Schools should focus on disciplinary problems they have with unruly students by removing them from the classroom and school grounds and notify the parent their child is suspended or expelled. grounds and notify the parent their child is suspended or expelled. Let the parent deal with their child's problem. There was a poor example of this during a recent incident at Blake Academy where a bully remains in school and the victim is removed from school. Backwards, isn't it? But as of yet, I have not heard or seen any updates on the matter. Now, I know the state is funding these mental health care programs, and it will take lawmakers to change it, but throwing money at this problem is not fixing it. One feature of this type of government social health care welfare makes people more dependent on government. Parents are the only ones that are responsible for their child's physical and mental health care, not the schools nor the government. Under current school board recent statistics show that student performance levels have dropped. Polk County's placement on student performance went from fifty-seventh out of sixty-seven counties to sixtieth. All this money spent on learning support should be spent on hiring real quality teachers that stick to teaching academics that will raise their students' level of performance and is beneficial to their future, and raise the bar on education standards by taking equity out of the equation. In closing, I would like to add, I don't think my tax dollars should pay for someone else's mental health care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Kai Moore, and on deck is Glenda White.
Hi, I'm Kai, and I'm a disabled queer activist from right here in Polk County, Florida, and a Polk County Public School graduate. Because it is not painfully obvious yet, there is a large group of conservatives here to demand that all school boards stop these proclamations. They want to abolish proclamations, and that was brought to us by our very own felon, Rick Nolte, which I don't even wanna get into the ethical issues of him being on this board, and you guys will say that it is not on the agenda, so for now, I will ignore it. I'm here to remind you that when you took this position on the board, you acknowledged and swore to uphold these standards, to hold yourself to the highest ethical standards, to act with honesty and integrity, and to embrace and uphold equity. And in case you didn't know that, equity means to recognize that we do not all start from the same place and must acknowledge and make injustices, make adjustments to imbalances. Proclamations are ceremonial documents issued by the Polk County Commission to honor, celebrate, and uplift events, groups of people, or to increase public awareness of noteworthy causes. In case you don't remember from last time I was in here, I informed you that demands like these that have the goal of silencing and erasing multiple minority groups such as the LGBTQ plus community, Black and Hispanic communities, disabled people, and more, are usually spoon-fed to board like this by groups such as Mom for Liberty and other groups, which some of which are here currently, that by the way, are usually either recognized hate groups, Nazis, or other forms of supremacists, and normally have the endorsement of our very own tropical furor.
Order.
Reclaiming my time, I implore you to do your job and recognize the demands of those who seek, and to not recognize the demands of those who seek to harm others, and instead focus on the things that are actually important and can better our systems, such as the overwhelming number of broken air conditioning systems that are forcing students and teachers to suffer through this...
This is not an Agenda Item.
Okay, then I will speak later.
Thank you. Next is Glenda White. However, we are not going to begin until the aisles are clear. There are people standing in the aisles, which I have already asked that you find a seat or go into the overflow room. On deck will be Maria Keith.
Good evening. My name is Glenda White of Winter Haven. I'm asking that you vote yes on Item P five on the action, action agenda to discontinue proclamations. Given that Polk performance ratings for Florida schools have slipped from fifty-seventh in the state to sixtieth out of sixty-seven, it is past time to stop catering to political groups and put your focus where it belongs, ensuring our kids are getting a solid education. I urge you, do the right thing. Vote yes on this matter. Regarding Consent Agenda Items M one and M three, I see that the board wants to contract out another three million dollars for mental health services. We're already spending copious amounts of money on supplemental education and support. Last month, you voted to provide health clinics in schools. Providing health care in school is completely inappropriate. I understand the need to ensure our kids are getting appropriate health and mental health care. However, the school is not the place for these services. The school system should not have access to kids' private health records and mental health records. Parents should be fully involved in the health care and mental health care of their kids, not to turn it over to the school. The schools should contract these services out and collect critical information and recommendations from the contracted providers. It's evident that in-school provision of these services has done nothing to improve education delivery, prevent school violence and bullying, as evidenced by the Brown case bullying, of which this school board has virtually ignored, and self-harm done by kids to themselves who have serious mental health issues. Now we wanna spend multiple millions more on additional services? Please, turn over health and mental health services to the professionals. Polk schools should stay in their own lane and provide a solid education for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dees. Maria Keith, and on deck is Anna Rivera.
Okay. Well, I'm here today to support the discontinuing of all proclamations by the school board. The act of proclamation is an abuse of power as you are forcing your opinions and ideas on everyone. This is not your job. Your job is to keep the children safe and to make sure the children receive the basic concepts of reading, writing, and math in the early years, adding history and other subjects after that. Um, each child's needs are different, and we need to consider that and not try and tell them who they are or what they need to be. So enclosure, I just want to say, if you give the children the basic tools, reading, writing, and math, in a safe environment, everything else will follow. If they can read, they can learn anything, and it also allows them to think for themselves, not what they are told to think. Proclamations will not fix anything, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. Anna Rivera, and on deck is Donna Hager.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon, everyone. I wanna start with something that was written a long, long time ago when they founded this country. "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are," one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin. I write to you today, and I sent all of you an email about the proclamations. And I just wanna say something real quick. And by the way, I did come in dress code, if anyone noticed. Um, being a member of this community for over fifteen years, running the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and a lot of you know me, plus also Women for LULAC, to disregard a community and an organization during proclamations is very, it's, it doesn't have a lot of forte to not do that. You have to recognize these communities because this room right now is full of these communities. Okay, so we wanna recognize communities that have given to this community, such as businesses. I moved to this community, why? Because I wanted to become an entrepreneur and recognize those. I brought my son here. He's gone through school here. He goes to college here. And I want everyone to realize that the importance of a proclamation is to recognize what everyone has done well and will continue to do well in this community. And this will affect us in a very negative way to not accept these. So I am asking you to vote no, and please keep these proclamations going because autism, veterans' rights, women's rights, and everyone's rights should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Hager, and on deck is Lydia Medrano.
I'm Donna Hager from Winter Haven, and I support the discontinuing, the practicing of proclamations. Thank you, Mr. Nolte, for putting that on the agenda. Proclamations do not support the mission of Polk County Schools to provide a high-quality education for all students. Proclamations do not encourage accepting people as individuals, but support grouping people by labeling and judging them. A school in Winter Haven received an F grade. Three in Lakeland received A grades, all elementary. Proclamations don't help bring up the grades in the school system. Proclamations do not improve reading performance, mathematical expertise, scientific understanding in writing skills. Proclamations do not make sport teams more cohesive, musical groups more pleasing to hear, artistic works more expressive, and students more prepared to be productive adults. It's past time for the school board to focus on things that do not have anything to do with education, and I encourage you to vote yes for doing away with proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. Next is Lydia Medrano, and on deck is Carol Essie.
My name is Lydia Medrano. I am the Vice President for the Southeast Region of the League of United Latin American Citizens, also known as LULAC. And LULAC is the oldest and the largest Hispanic civil rights organization in the United States. My message to you today is that eliminating proclamations is the same as denying the contributions made by the diversity of residents in this county. To recognize veterans, domestic violence awareness, Hispanic Heritage Month, African-American Historic, uh, History Month, LGBTQ, women, et cetera, is to create conscience of who we really are. We cannot live in denial that we are diverse. Proclamations is a way to show that this board values each and everyone, that it appreciates that it's diversity, and respects residents' equal rights, which are given by the Constitution. We are here because we're concerned about the decision that the school board is about to make. We can achieve unity by respecting diversity within our community. Thank you.
Next is Carol Essie, and on deck is Emmett Purvis.
Board members, Superintendent Hyde, and others in the room. My name is Carol Essie. I'm a Polk County resident and taxpayer. I grew up with parents who were both public school teachers, and I was trained to be a teacher a long time ago. I remember overhearing my parents say they couldn't do what some of their friends were doing, and that was sending their children to private school. Now, I can tell you that I'm so thankful that they didn't. I went to public schools similar to Polk that were diverse in many different ways. My public school education better prepared me for life, my career dealing with people from all walks of life, and even the culture wars today. And I am speaking about the proclamations, wanting those to stay, and I guess that's a vote no. So I want to thank the school board members, and Dr. Hyde, and the teachers that they work with for the dedication to their students. And my parents taught me what a huge job you all have, especially the teachers. And today, we as parents, grandparents, uncles and commu, aunts and uncles, and community members, we are indebted to you all. And we do support you. Many of us do that don't come here, so I'm here to speak for them. Last month's meeting was the first I ever watched. And I was shocked because, well, that's partly why I'm here today. Um, it's apparent that many do not understand the complexity of your jobs. Training and experience are truly necessary to deal with the multiple issues in education and many different viewpoints. Even more important, public schools are the bedrock of democracy. One viewpoint is not enough. Parents and family members and friends have a hard job, too. Instead of trying to do your job, I encourage them to continue to instill values in their children and support them in school and church activities. My parents did that, and believe me, I made it hard for them, but it did stiff. I would suggest trying to collaborate with teachers instead of criticizing. Don't be afraid of differences. They are learning experiences. We can all work together, which will help us understand each other. To the board members, please allow diversity to be celebrated by proclamations you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Emmett Purvis, and on deck is Terry Pickle.
Emmett Purvis, six, five, he's Stewart here in Barto, and I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the proclamations, and something I'd like to share with you. I worked for the company that owned this building that you're operating in. I retired from that same company. We had a board of directors, which is your job. You're a board of directors. And you make decisions, and sometimes it appears that the tail's wagging the dog. You people, Mr. Hyde works for you, and I'm an investor. Where's my ROI on all of the money? We dropped three more points. Where's the return on the investment? We went out of business. That's why you have this building, because no ROI. And I ask you, before I close, and I'd like to say this, I have no problem with proclamations as long as they pertain to school business and no further. You wanna, you want to, and, and I agree, students should be recognized. I'm a veteran. You don't have to recognize me. I'll get along without it, but keep it within your jurisdiction. And I thank you, and I respect each one of you personally, and I respect what you do. But there again, it comes back, we are the investors, and we expect a return on our investment. Thank you.
Barry Pickle, and on deck is Royal Brown.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I do, I appreciate everything that you do. I really do. As a father and a grandfather, um, still have two grandchildren in public school, not here in Florida anymore. They moved to South Carolina. But I want to say that I think that we're missing the mark when we get focused on diversions. I, it's the best, uh, best way I know how to put it. But in my opinion, to attempt to promote or espouse a culture or a society to a political or socially-driven agenda misses the mark totally on the purpose of educating our young people. Um, rather, as in the words of Noah Webster, um, known as the father of American scholarship and education, he penned these words in seventeen eighty-eight. He said, "It is, and it is an object of vast magnitude that systems of education should be adopted and pursued, which may not only diffuse a knowledge of the sciences, but may implant in the minds of the American youth the principles of virtue and of liberty, and inspire them with just and liberal ideas of government and with an inviolable attachment to their own country." I believe that this is the, the primary, and almost, if you will, the sole purpose of education is to instill these values, to instill these principles in our youth and our children. is to instill these values, to instill these principles in our youth and our children. And as teachers, and I was a teacher for several years in Texas where I'm from, not in public school, but in Bible school, it's very important, the job that you have undertaken as a teacher, as a school board member, because this is the future of our country. The people that you are nurturing, the people that you are bringing up and instilling these virtues and the knowledge as well, and I thank you for your time. I would say please vote yes. The proclamations aren't a, it's not the focus that we should be looking at in terms of educating our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickle. Royal Brown, and on deck is Bob Nichol.
Good afternoon, I'm Royal Brown III. I live in Winter Haven, Florida. I'm here to urge you to vote to end all proclamations by the school board. Some of your past proclamations have been very divisive, as they pit people with different values, some political or cultural in nature against each other. You should not take sides. Doing so is playing identity politics, which do not unite people, but rather significantly divide them. Proclamations often promote the beliefs of some groups which are not shared by the beliefs of other groups, and this causes dissension. At your work session on July 25th, one of your school board members stated, and I quote, "It is unfortunate that proclamations have turned into political circuses, and that's what we've seen." I agree with that. She also went on to say, and it's unfortunate, and I quote the following, "We need to listen to people who have students in school, because a lot of the things we're listening to are from people who have no interests, no vested interest in the outcome, because they don't have children in our schools." That's a false statement, folks, for three reasons. It's an insulting statement, quite frankly. First of all, we have a vested interest in our children, as the future of our country depends on the future of our children, and we know that. The quality of their education and their ability to meet standards for their grade levels by subject, which is far too, we have far too many Polk County public school students that aren't meeting these standards. Secondly, the source of funding for your school board's salaries and our schools are we taxpayers, who pay county, state, and federal taxes. Thirdly, we vote for school board members, okay? And this also gives us the right to express our views on education issues at school board meetings. So to say that the only people that have any vested interest in our students are those who have children in school, that's just wrong, and you shouldn't be making comments like that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Bob Nichol, and on deck is James Taggett.
Good evening, my name is Bob Nichol. I'm an ESE Inclusion teacher in Haynes City. I live at 1054 Medina Drive in Winter Haven. In 1835, New York Governor Henry Seward and his wife Frances embarked on what was to have been a tour of the South. In her book Team of Rivals, Doris Kearns Goodwin wrote of how the Sewards came across a group of ten slave children on the road outside of Richmond. The children were chained together by their wrists, they'd been separated from their parents, and purchased from different plantations that day. They were on their way to be auctioned off. The Sewards found the scene so revolting that they turned their carriage around and went home. Fast forward to this summer, when the Florida Board of Education adopted new African-American standards that teach how slavery was beneficial. Fast forward to tonight, where some members of this board want to abolish proclamations honoring Black History Month. On March 15th, 2007, Lake Region High School graduate Ryan Skipper was stabbed nineteen times, his throat was slit, his body was left by the side of a road in Juanita. In a public service announcement released by Quagally Florida, Ryan's mother said her son was murdered because he was gay. Fast forward to tonight, where some members of this board want to do away with proclamations honoring Pride Month. Now, since some members of the board also want to do away with Hispanic Heritage Month, allow me to do my own proclamation. I would like to honor one of Puerto Rico's all-time greats, Roberto Clemente. He would have been 69 this month, Hall of Famer, 13 All-Star Games, National League MVP, National League batting champion, Gold Glove Award winner. Tragically, Roberto Clemente died in a plane crash when he was only 38. Tonight, Roberto Clemente is rolling over in his grave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. James Taggett, and on deck is Joellen McPeak.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jim Taggett. I'm a Polk County resident, taxpayer, and voter, okay? And I'm asking you to vote yes on P5. Let's get rid of the proclamations, okay? My reasons are, with these proclamations, you're recognizing this group, or that group, or a particular lifestyle, or a particular sexual orientation, while ignoring everybody else. That's not fair to the everybody else. We've heard about being equitable, okay? If you want to be fair and equitable to everybody, you're going to need a lot more proclamations, okay? There's not enough time in the school board meeting to do that. The same idea with having a month for this group, or a month for that group, or a month for this activity, okay? Why don't we have a month for math? A month for English? A month for science? A month for American history? Another one for world history, okay? Your job on the school board is oversee the education of the Polk County students, prepare them for the world, citizenship, okay? Like somebody just mentioned, okay? Out of 67 school boards, Polk County is number 60. Let's get it up here somewhere, to a reasonable number. That is your job, okay? Let's dispense with the fluff and just educate our children. Teach them math, teach them how to add and subtract and multiply with a pencil and paper, not pushing buttons on a thing, okay? Teach you how to read and write, speak proper English, accurate American history, maybe job training for those that aren't going to college. That is your job, okay? Okay? And now, as far as Ms. Miller's comments on the July 25th work session, okay? I'm a Polk County property owner and taxpayer. My tax dollars pay for those seats. I do have the right to follow my money and see how it's spent. I'm also a voter. I get to follow my vote and have a say in what you all do, okay? If you want to refund my tax dollars, I'll go home and I'll shut up.
This is not an agenda item.
Well, thank you for your time.
Joellen McPeak, and on deck is Stephanie Yokum.
Good evening, my name is Joellen McPeak. My pronouns are she/her. I am here to express my opposition to discontinuing proclamations and show my support for the development of a policy for adopting future proclamations to include a voice by board members. I would like to take a moment to talk about the importance of proclamations and how they support historically marginalized groups. Proclamations share a common purpose: to recognize, honor, or support particular individuals or groups. For historically marginalized groups, proclamations can be a powerful tool for creating and maintaining their identity. By acknowledging their unique experiences, struggles, and contributions, proclamations can help to validate and affirm their place in society. This can be especially important for groups that have been historically erased or sidelined, such as women, people of color, LGBTQ plus individuals, the disabled persons, and others. Proclamations create space by publicly recognizing groups' existences and needs. Proclamations can help break down barriers and promote inclusion. This is especially important in areas where discrimination or prejudice is still prevalent, such as schools and public spaces. Finally, proclamations can support equity by highlighting the specific challenges and injustices faced by historically marginalized groups. By drawing attention to these issues, proclamations can spur action and create momentum for change. Our students deserve to be seen and to feel safe in our schools. As you know, chronic absenteeism has a negative impact on student achievement. Students who feel valued, students who feel connected, students who feel seen, come to school. Students who have a sense of belonging engage academically. Proclamations that celebrate and honor our diverse, vibrant community and illuminate issues that affect our students add to our students' sense of belonging, an essential component to learning. Thank you.
Stephanie Yokum, and on deck is Rain Johnson.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Yokum. I'm not only the Polk Education Association president, I'm a teacher, and I'm a mother of a now kindergartner in our school system. Proclamations have been a time of celebration, recognition, and representation in Polk County public schools for many years, and this practice should remain a cornerstone of Polk County public schools and our mission and vision to put students first. Divisive can be used a great deal of things in the world of public education today, but our school board uplifting important issues like child abuse awareness, fine arts education, disability awareness, and celebrating historically underrepresented minority groups is far from divisive. It's interesting how last year, all seven of you gave a standing ovation for Mr. J.J. Corbett as he accepted the Black History Month proclamation, but now that very act is viewed as divisive. I find it also curious that now, all of the sudden, there is no clear progress or process for proclamations, while in the past, before her departure from the district, Marissa Green oversaw all board proclamations that staff or outside groups submitted through a submission form and a process. These recognitions were ultimately approved by the superintendent's office to come before the board. Why is this initiative now? I think we all know the answer here. Putting students first means celebrating what makes our students different and unique, while binding us together as a community. Students cannot learn the academics we want them to excel in if they do not feel valued and see themselves represented in the very educational system they participate in that completes our public school system. Representation matters, not just for our students, but for our teachers and our staff, and our community as a whole. When we can see ourselves represented at all levels, we can dream and achieve what we can visualize in others that have come before us or occupy those spaces now. This is the power and the necessity of proclamations, and this is why we advocate for proclamations to remain a part of Polk County public schools. I implore you all as a board to not listen to a fringe minority of people and listen to your community at large. Thank you.
Rain Johnson, and on deck is Matthew Grishaloski.
Hello, I am Rain Johnson with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida's Youth Chapter. Today I have a few questions for you, which are all rhetorical, don't worry, you don't have to answer them. Number one, are you stupid? Number two, what made you think this was a good idea? Also, this is on P5. Number three, why? Number four, do you know the outcome of this? And number five, why can we open with prayer but can't acknowledge gay people exist? Just, you know, some questions I have. Some of you guys need to pull your dentures out and stop trying to make rules for a generation you don't relate to. I'm trying to wrap my head around the idea that this was ever a good plan. To remove the proclamations that acknowledge things like Pride Month, it's seriously baffling that y'all have the intelligence of a cell missing its nucleus to the members of the board who think, love, who can think, love y'all, keep trying your best to outweigh the negativity that this is. Side note, y'all know Memorial Day is a proclamation, right? As well as Fourth of July and President's Day?
Please face who you're speaking to.
And all of your patriotic days. So, if we want to remove proclamations, let's go ahead and remove proclamations, but know that we have to remove all proclamations, not just the ones you dislike, meaning not just Pride Month, not just mental health, not just whatever you decide is inappropriate for school. I'm just trying to, you know, think of some other examples, but you know, those are the biggest ones, because a bunch, most of y'all are just homophobic, transphobic people. And, you know, we can throw the term bigot in there as well, because most of you people want to keep things like Memorial Day, President's Day, and every other patriotic day. How many times do we have to come up here? By the way, I'm a student at the 10th grade who had to leave early from school so I could come and speak on this. I'm taking Algebra II, I'm taking world history, but guess what? It's all secular, which, thank God for that one. So I'm just trying to think and think of why this was ever a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm going to have you say your own last name when you get to the mic, and on deck is Paul Ron Cruz.
Grishaloski.
Grishaloski, I'm sorry.
Grishaloski, it's Polish. So I have stood before the board numerous times, including two months ago, as a young voice that has worked hard to involve students in government, such as like the state senate and the school board. I'm standing here today to speak in favor of keeping proclamations. Since two months ago, when I first spoke before the board, I have heard from what feels like hundreds of members of the Polk County Public Education System and its community, and I want to amplify their voices as well as mine. I'll tell you the experience that many gay and trans students in Polk County face. My first and only out-gay teacher faced discrimination with people calling him homophobic slurs in the classroom every single day, including when his grandmother passed away and he had to take leave for months. I never saw that teacher ever again, and I don't know if he even is in the education field due to the trauma that he faced from students. In my senior year in the George Shinkins parking lot, I remember being shouted at by a group of students in a car that demeaned me as an effing queer, and then they, as a joke, acted as if they were going to jump me. I've of course brought that to the principal and other faculty members, but they couldn't do anything about it. My best friend is still a senior in high school, and she's terrified to hold her true identity in our classrooms and our hallways because of potential discrimination. My other best friend's mother is a teacher and feels scared to even say the word gay in the classroom. Polk County has a diverse community of queer students in the classroom, our hallways, and everywhere else. In fact, Dr. Allen, the valedictorian of one of your most prestigious high schools that is going to Duke is gay. The best talent of the next generation is massively queer, trans, and more. We need to stand up and keep our students in our county by demanding that proclamations should exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Ron Cruz, and on deck is Bonnie Patterson James.
My name is Paul Cruz. I am a US Army veteran, combat veteran, thank you. I am also a member of LULAC and vice president of the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce here in Polk County. And I first wanted to say thank you to all the service members, teachers, community contributors, first responders, and especially the teachers. I want to say thank you to everybody, because I have three boys, and I could not imagine doing, you know, taking care of 30-plus kids on a daily basis, so thank you to everybody first off. Second, I'd like to say that we are more alike than we are different. Everyone here is here because they care. Like every single person, regardless of opinion, is here because they care about the future of children, so let's be clear about that, right? Our community and our children going forward, let's, I have to say from a personal standpoint, proclamations are essentially a conduit to a conversation, and stifling that conversation is equal to censorship and a violation of freedom of speech. is equal to censorship and a violation of freedom of speech. It was said that education is about preparing kids for the world, but gay people, black people, Latino, Hispanic, and Asian, et cetera, all people that exist. So they will have to deal with these people in the real world, and it's up to the parents to instill their own values and beliefs in their children, not the jobs of the school board or the teachers to instill specific values in children, instead to educate them so that they respect others when those beliefs are different or cultural backgrounds are different. So, we should be having these difficult conversations. It is the intent of coming to a compromise that would be better for the children who are in the school today and that will be in school tomorrow. They have been posted or shared online encouraging people to support the ending of proclamations by wearing white t-shirts. I'm not going to suggest that that is a specific intent, but can somebody please recognize how that could look to a different group, especially a minority group, that could be perceived as negative? So suggesting that, there already seems to be a hot button issue and culture war buttons that are constantly being pressed, but they have nothing to do with what's actually affecting these children. Let's actually take into consideration that this is impeding our ability to educate and also instill proper values going forward. What happened to freedom? What happened to being exposed to contrasting ideas and being allowed to make up your own mind? As a service member, I've lived by a code, and that I may not agree with your opinion, but I will defend with my life the ability for you to express them just as every American should. Therefore, I urge you to vote no on item P5 regarding proclamations because we need our voices heard.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Bonnie Patterson James, and on deck is Cesar Ramirez.
Good evening, I'm here again as a mother, grandmother, and concerned citizen in Polk County. I'm an activist in Polk County, and I'm here to address the Pride proclamation, and sadly, we continue to wait for the proclamation to be added to the agenda. The LGBTQIA+ community adds to our culture and contributions that have been made at a local, state, and national level. I urge you to vote no on removing the proclamations because they are an individual celebration. The opposite of pride is shame, and it appears from the actions of our legislators, the speakers here, Superintendent Hyde, and citizens defending freedom that they would rather these children and staff live in shame. I don't understand how those coming up and spewing Christian values continue to forget religious values have no place in our government. You are elected officials, leave your faith at the door. You took an oath... By putting your Christian faith first, you are neglecting our Jewish students and families, our Muslim families. It is not just you. You took an oath to represent all, to represent all of the students and not just white cis kids. Lakeland is a large and diverse community with the people living by the laws. The laws include living how you want to live and being who you are in life, as long as you're not hurting another person. Removing proclamations hurts people and communities. The proclamations were not an issue until Superintendent Hyde decided to use his personal beliefs and remove the June Proclamations for Pride. How do you explain your bias when there are so many proclamations to be read? National Days, Religious Freedom Day, Education Sharing Day, Transgender Day of Visibility, Thanksgiving Day, I mean, come on! I will never forget how I was rescued in school from an abusive home. I remember the day with clarity in my algebra teacher reaching out that something was off. It was that day my last abuse occurred, and I was removed from that toxic environment. I 100 support mental health and teachers being able to speak to students because they may be the only person a student is gonna talk to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson James. Next is Cesar Ramirez, and on deck is James Guth.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, school board members and superintendent for allowing me to be here today. I had a full speech prepared. I'm gonna speak a little bit from the heart. I have many titles in this community, but probably not one more important than Dad. I have two daughters that went through the public school system, and I'm so proud to be a Polk resident. By the way, Oscar J. Polk is the coolest school. It is, and now, and one of two coolest schools, the other one is Wagner, and Dr. Allen, they're both in your districts, so good job. Appreciate that. But, proclamations are extremely important, and here's why. And I want to dispel some of the things that were said earlier about it not being education. Not only is it honoring something special, but it also educates people on what that is. How do we know about General Colin Powell and the contributions he made from a man who came from one of the poorest neighborhoods in the United States to become a five-star general and a secretary of state under President Bush? How do we know about the Boudincañers, Puerto Rican Army Regiment, and the contributions and the sacrifices they made to our American history? How do we know without acknowledging that in Hispanic Heritage Month? Someone said here earlier that proclamations are not educational, I disagree. I think they're an opportunity for all of us to learn a little bit something about one another. This is not a political issue for me, because we could learn about each other in so many different ways, and eliminating proclamations solves a problem we don't have. There is no issues, except that people think that we shouldn't be focusing on one group. We're not, we're focusing on those contributions that are important to our community, and people who look like me would like to know that we are celebrating that of which we are Americans. I hope for a day that we could get rid of the hyphenated American, I don't want to be a Hispanic American anymore. I'm an American, I'm a third-generation veteran. Father fought in Vietnam, grandfather fought in World War II. These proclamations allow us to represent that history. And let's face it, can't eliminate proclamations because of one you don't like, because you eliminate all the other ones. And even if you don't like it, learn a little bit something about it. Folks, education, it's just mind-boggling that this is a conversation I'm having with the school board to have a vote on. Don't, I'm asking you, vote no to eliminating education.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. James Guth, and on deck is Elizabeth Rasmussen.
Thank you, my name is James Guth, I live in Pointeana. You know, iron is an amazing thing. It's reasonably plentiful.
Microphone, speak into the microphone.
It's on, we got it.
I'm sorry. Iron is an amazing thing. It's reasonably plentiful, it's malleable, it's usable, but no one would say it's wrong. It's not, and it rusts. But if you mix a little carbon and a little manganese into it, it becomes steel. But it still rusts. If you throw a little nickel and a little chromium into it, you can make stainless But you don't get steel by taking a charcoal briquette and throwing it onto a plank of iron. That isn't how it works. The strength from steel comes from the manganese and the carbon finding its way into the interstitial defects that exist in the lattice of the iron. It isn't just pieces, it's an alloy, and that's what America is. America is a melting pot. Let me encourage you to keep that melting pot. On the two nuclear submarines which I was fortunate enough to command, and in fact, the seven others that I served on, there was no room for air breathers that did not contribute, and not one job was unnecessary. Every person knew that they could depend on every other person for their very lives. Sonar men were no more important than machinist mates, and we did not have sonar day or machinist mate week. We were just proud to be a subset of that melting pot that is America, that alloy that makes us strong. No matter how honorable the intentions sound, no matter how celebrated the speaker, these proclamations hide a division agenda. They create division, and trust me, there is an agenda. And yeah, you've been deluded in going along with it for a long time. No one can contest the importance of the 101st Airborne, for example, in winning World War II, but the 101st Airborne did not win World War II. They worked with Patton's tanks and the RAF, and yes, the Red Army, to win World War II. It was a team effort. I'm here today to ask you to stop deluding yourselves into thinking that you can stop segregation by segregating.
Thank you, Mr. Guth. Elizabeth Rasmussen, and on deck is Kristi McCullough.
I'm Elizabeth Rasmussen.
Sorry, Rasmussen.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. My name is Elizabeth Rasmussen, and I come to speak to you today regarding the use of proclamations in our school district. America is a diverse place, and Florida and Polk County are no different. By banning the use of proclamation, we are effectively saying that diversity has no place in Polk County. This is entirely misleading as we have students, faculty, and staff who are from all walks of life. By getting rid of proclamations, we are saying that the diverse backgrounds of these students, faculty, and staff do not matter and do not deserve recognition. I urge you to reconsider the banning of proclamations and to keep diversity in Polk County schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kristi McCullough, and on deck is Roxanne Watkins.
Kristi McCullough, Winter Haven, Florida. To proclaim is declare something one considers important with emphasis. At the beginning of each work session, you say in the "who are we" that one of the four most important things is to establish a culture where stakeholders feel valued. Publicly recognizing that groups of these stakeholders matter seems like an easy way to do this. Our schools are desperate for resources, and both time and money. Communities, partners bless us with both. When they make a donation or allow workers to work with our, come and help our schools during work hours, it seems like, why can't we even take 10 minutes to say thank you, to publicly say thank you? The amount of teens who said they were lonely doubled from 2012 to 2018, and the pandemic only made that worse. People that are isolated and lonely are more likely to suffer from anxiety, depression, more likely to self-harm, use substance abuse, or engage in destructive behavior, either toward themselves or others. Many of our students have homes where they have no value. School may be the only place that are valued. We expect them to come every day and do their best, we need to tell them they're important. We must show people they are seen before we can expect them to actively participate. This goes for students, teachers, support staff, administrators, those in the district office, our families of our students, and our community partners. All need to feel valued. I do agree if a proclamation does not support one of our stakeholder groups, we don't need to spend our time on it. I thought about the irony that at the same meeting where some of you wanted to do away with proclamations, you celebrated a program by Polk Schools where they proclaim how amazing our employees are, the focus on excellence. Last year was the worst year of my 21-year teaching career. I actually thought about walking out almost daily. The thing that may have kept me in the classroom was getting that card and that prize, knowing that someone took the time to write and say what I did mattered. That may have kept me in the classroom, that little bit of recognition. You guys know this because Reba Coyle read my email to you last year about how important it was. Being recognized matters. So, Mr. Knowlton, you said we need to stop doing proclamations and get back to teaching. Well, here's the thing, not doing proclamations lets you guys go home 15 minutes earlier. It doesn't change the classroom, it doesn't change a thing for our teachers. We still do the same job. If you want to make a difference in our classrooms, give teachers more time to do the stuff they need to do to teach and do less extra stuff that doesn't matter and doesn't have anything to do with teaching. Take some of the stuff off their plate, just trust them, give them time to teach, and realize that maybe being told they're important is the reason they come. They come, their students come, our community partners come. Proclamations matter because they support the mission you read each and every week.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Roxanne Watkins, and on deck is Terri Coney.
We need to understand that all citizens in Polk County are vested in the success of our schools. It doesn't matter if you have a child in the county school system or not. I'm a small business owner, we hire graduates from the Polk County School System. They will enter our military, just as I did as a Polk County School graduate. I spent 30 years in the military, serving around the world. Polk County represents us everywhere. When our students graduate and join the military, join international businesses, I pay tens of thousands of dollars in taxes every year on multiple properties around the county. We fought a revolutionary war against taxation without representation, so I feel very strongly that I have an active role. I vote for county school board members, and it is my job to hold my person that I vote for accountable. In addition, I want to compliment those members who understand that their job is, as a school board member, is focusing on the children and their education. I want to read a few numbers that I found online today. Lakeland School fell from a ranking of 230 in 2018 to 258 last year. Winter Haven fell from 274 to 327. Highland City fell from 195 to 257. Polk City fell from 340 to 380. Please focus on educating our children and supporting our teachers who just want to do their job. As a 30-year veteran and 100% disabled veteran, I don't need a proclamation from a county school board member to feel appreciated or affirmed for my contribution to this county or to this country.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Terri Coney, and on deck is Sean Jordan.
Good evening, school board, Superintendent Hyde. And so I get to side of the way first. I would ask you to vote no on this agenda item, P5. Second, proclamations have everything to do with education. Next, you have a very hard job. Leadership is hard. Democracy is messy and cumbersome, but that's what our country was built on. Compromise, nobody gets everything that they want. If you go back to the 1787 Constitutional Convention, there was a compromise made on the three-fifth item. Some of you may know what that is if you don't Google it, but I've heard constantly since I've been in here about the role of education and what proclamations do, what proclamations don't do, ratings going up and down. Proclamations have nothing, nothing whatsoever to do with that. We need to do everything we can to inspire our kids, and they are inspired if we can do or say or show them something that makes them feel good. I was at the Lakeland City Commission meeting yesterday, and they still do proclamations. They did a proclamation on general aviation. They did a proclamation for a lineman, the men that go up and work on the lines. I spoke with Bill Beasley, the county manager, and I asked him about proclamations. They still do proclamations, but they decide which ones they want to do. Don't take the easy way out. It's easy just, oh, we're not gonna do this anymore. It really is. You're paid to make decisions, and you have hard decisions to make. I sat here through the work session, and some of it I found frivolous, I mean, we're dealing with cell phones and names and all these things. I mean, we're dealing with cell phones and names and all these things. But then, you have hard decisions on money and capital budget and buildings. So, I mean, we're wasting all this time talking about proclamations, you know, to use my inner Allen Iverson. Proclamations, really? So, if you're going to do this, I would ask you just to table the whole thing and not even vote. Because we have smart people up here. Talk about it, and you can select the ones you want. You basically have nine months through a school year.
Thank you, Mr. Coney. Sean Jordan. Sean Jordan, and on deck is Abdul Al Katab.
My name is Sean Jordan, a Lakeland resident and proud business owner here in Polk County. There are certain things that go on in this wonderful county, in our schools. And unfortunately, school boards have a hard decision. And a hard decision is what your sign says, "Students First." We need to bring back the value of education. We have lots of beautiful, young, bright-minded children that are graduating and/or don't have the time, or the teachers don't have the time, to give them the education that they need. Because they're too busy with this proclamation, this proclamation, busy with this, oh, we got to take time for this, we got to take time for that. Simply, let's just get rid of them all. Everyone say, oh, it's Thanksgiving Day, or it's this day. I sit back and look at my daughter's school schedule, how many days she's actually in school, how many days she's actually out of school, versus every different holiday here, da-da-da-da-da, and I'm going, wow. As a business owner, I'm blessed to be able to say, okay, I can take that day off of work and make sure my daughter has someone to watch over, to keep her out of trouble. I look at this and then listen to all the different voices out there, all the wide different views on everything. But I was also the same person that was at the city council meeting a few weeks ago when they had drag queens. And when the drag queen show, I was the only one that came up and brought up State Statute 827.04. And that right there is contributing to the delinquency of a minor. Some will say that doesn't have any standing, any value in it. But if we look at line B, the word persuasion is in there. So if we get a young child that's in a school, say in Western State, California, where they do allow it, and where certain teachers will have a room that allow little Timmy dressed as Mrs. Kim. And now, another little child will say, oh, wait a minute, is that right or is that wrong? It's persuasion. Let's look at the pure value of the fact, proclamations have no place in school. Our children need to be able to sit back, study, and be the best, brightest minds that they can be, because they are our future. They are the ones that will be running this country one day. And if we are flooded in our minds with different opportunities and different proclamations and confusing them with that, let's bring back reading, writing, and arithmetic. Let's bring back the values, the great values which made this wonderful country so great and a beautiful place that many people from around the world fight hard for. I used to work with a guy, tried 12 times to get here from Cuba. He finally made it here. And he worked very hard, and he was one of the hardest-working guys I ever worked with. I feel blessed to work with that man. He's the only one that would go into hard situations with me and pull out the hardest and most difficult things. It's in your hands, our children's future. I yield.
Abdul, and on deck is Robert Goodman.
Madam Chair, board members, fellow citizens, I rise this evening in support of P5. The Declaration of Independence declares, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And then it goes on to say that we have government and we have boards like this one that exist by the consent of the governed. We who assemble ourselves here are the ones that provide that consent to you to do the work that we call you to do. I've heard many different positions. Mine is that I support this, and I believe that it's a time-honored tradition that school boards provide proclamations that recognize significant historical, cultural, ethnic, and other occurrences in our community. It appears to me that this discontinuing proclamations is simply a gateway to denying or depriving other activities under the guise of anti-woke shenanigans. John Maxwell tells us that the courage of the leader is not for himself or herself, but for those who are dependent on him to lead. We as citizens of this community are dependent on you to lead and to make an example or to set an example for our children. We have far too many leaders in our community now that get up and espouse all kinds of foolishness under the guise of leadership, and then they are just being disrespectful, dishonorable. I served in the United States Army. I've heard others say that. We can all claim all these great things that we've done for this country. I'm a volunteer with the Polk County School Boards. I give my time, free time, I might add, and I appreciate that opportunity. The word "education" comes from the Latin word "educare," which means to draw out from within. It's the responsibility and it's the practice of a proclamation to draw out that diversity, that excellence that exists in all of us and in the things that we do. And we need to support those things in our communities. I grew up in this community, and I used to drive through a portion of town that said, no dogs, no cats, no Mexicans, no Puerto Ricans, no- You see, and I'm a product of Polk County School Board, and they said that to me that it was a melting pot and that I could pull myself up by my bootstraps. I pulled myself up by my bootstraps, and I'm standing here flat-footed telling you that what we need to do is support this, and if you can't do that, I'll be here just as regularly as those who want to oppose it.
Thank you. Robert Goodman, and on deck is Karen Welzel.
I'm going to go off script just a little bit. I had some things written I was going to say, and some of it's already been said. I want to take time to talk to you tonight as a father of three, grandfather of quite a few, all of my children. I am a product of public schools. My children are in public schools. My grandchildren are in public schools. I want to take time to focus on the reason you're elected and the reason everyone in this room, no matter what their point of view is, is here. We're all here because we want to focus on the children. Your job is to ensure that the children of Polk County public schools have a quality education. They're prepared for a successful life after their K-12 education is complete. Whether that involves going to college, entering the workforce of Polk County, or whatever they choose to do. What they do in these schools is the citizens that we are going to be hiring, the citizens that we are going to be electing, and the citizens that are going to run this country in the future. Every citizen of Polk County, every taxpayer, has a vested interest in them. All of you, some of you on the board have students that have never entered a public school a day in their life. And you criticize people who say, well, you don't have anyone in school.
Where is the agenda item?
Okay.
Let's get to the topic.
The board is as diverse as the audience. So, we want to, I think that it's sad that we're going to end proclamations. That's something that nobody would ever really want, but one of the board members last month said it's turned into a circus. Tonight, we had Rain Johnson tell people to take their dentures out or put their dentures in. They spoke to all of you disrespectfully. You're working to make sure that children of Polk County have a good education. You're working hard. That kind of disrespect is why we're here. And again, there it is. We see this at every school board meeting we speak at for the state. When we go to the state school board meeting, it's always people disrespecting those who disagree. We're number 60 out of 67 counties. Please fix that. We will partner with you. We'll work with you. I will dedicate any amount of time that is needed to get a better education for our students. Let's stop with political nonsense and get on with educating students. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Welzel, and on deck is John Lynn.
Hi, my name is Karen Welzel. I live in Winter Haven, Florida. Polk County School Board members and Superintendent Hyde, thank you for allowing me this time to speak on an important issue. I was very sad and frankly disappointed when I heard that a specific group of people in our community felt that proclamations by the Polk County School Board are divisive. The proclamations range from issues such as domestic violence awareness, special education awareness, veteran recognition, to those proclamations that acknowledge the identities of our community. Identities that celebrate our diversity, like Hispanic Heritage Month, African-American History Month, LGBTQ History Month, Women's History Month, and so many others. I believe that our differences do not divide us, but they reinforce the ability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences. School board proclamations should be continued to recognize our whole community and all of its amazing and diverse members. Now more than ever, we need to show students, staff, and families that they are valued here in Polk County, no matter who they are, where they come from, or who their parents are. Board members, I encourage you, please continue the practice of proclamations in these meetings. We cannot allow small-minded groups to determine what books our children read or the recognition and honor of our diversity in our community. Children need to learn about our history, about the differences in our family, in our religions, and yes, the differences in the color of our skin or the language that we speak. Children learn what they live. We want them to live in a happy, healthy, and loving environment, to learn all they can to be productive citizens in a scary world, and to build a community that recognizes, accepts, and celebrates those differences together. We should not promote divisiveness or hate in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Lynn, and on deck is Donna Windsor.
Thank you, board, for your patience with robust and dynamic differences and conversation. That's what our country was founded on. Our culture today is all too often looking for ways to have our feelings hurt. But what I'm hearing tonight is robust debate. You'll make the decision at the end of this as to whether we have resolutions, proclamations, excuse me, continue. I stand before you tonight with some comments from what I've observed over the past several school board meetings. Reference the board's continued practice of issuing proclamations. This practice should be abandoned immediately. It should be abandoned by seven to zero vote, actually. For any elected body to continue a practice fraught with so much controversy on matters having nothing to do with the academic achievement of our students should be really a no-brainer. The abandonment of proclamations should be the easiest vote of your tenure on this school board. Along with the same topic, it is extremely disappointing to me as a citizen that we are told basically we are not worthy of coming before you since we have no children in the Polk County school system. Having children in Polk County schools is not, is entirely beside the point. All Polk citizens should be concerned with the academic achievement or lack thereof of all students. Being lectured by a member of the board saying we have no, quote, "vested interest" is insulting, and I would request that that bullying tactic immediately cease. Just today, I received from the Polk County Property Appraiser's office an indication of what my property taxes will be for 2024. The largest piece of that bill is your Polk County, or is our Polk County school system. What governing body was the largest recipient of the taxes in the past and will be going forward? The Polk County School District. That alone qualifies me to stand at this podium. Not whether I have kids, grandkids, no people, or whatever. Those are all various dynamics, and they're factual. But me standing here before you as a taxpayer, I have a right to be here and express my opinion and actually be continually obligated to understand what's going on with Polk County school systems. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Windsor. And on deck is Kit Taylor.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you all for being here. I would like to thank the teachers and also the deputies that are keeping us safe. You know, I had something prepared, but then, as I listened to people speak, a lot of people already covered some of the things that I wanted to say. You know, I'm here to speak about P5, the proclamations, and I do think that they're an important part of education because they teach our children a very important lesson, which is how to be able to be around people that are different than you, that believe differently than you. You know, this meeting started with, I don't remember what you called it, but either way, it was a prayer. And I'm an atheist, so I don't agree with that. But I don't have to insist that you never praise your higher power, whatever that might be, because it makes me uncomfortable. All I can do is opt out. You know, I learned critical thinking because that allows me to decide whether or not I believe what you believe. It doesn't mean I have to tell you what you can and cannot believe. That being said, I think proclamations are a great way to teach our kids to be a global citizen, to get along with people who are different than them. It's also a way to teach them to be aware of things they might not have been aware of. And it also allows us to devote other resources, like time and money, to the things that our students don't get enough of, which is, you know, we have teacher shortages, we have AC problems, we have other things where our kids, those things are taken away from our kids' education far more than whether we spend 15 minutes saying that we proclaim acceptance of a group or not a group or a cause. That seems silly to me. We have so much bigger problems. It seems silly to me that when my kids are better prepared to figure out what to do when someone starts shooting than I am because we can't stop those things. But we're worried about whether or not saying gay people are okay is going to be a problem for my kids. It's not. They're not going to turn gay, and neither are yours. So, I really think we need to get our priorities in order. We need to get it together, and we need to put the students first, like it says there. If we haven't done it already, which we really haven't, we need to start today. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Kit Taylor. And on deck is Anita Carson.
Good evening. Members of the school board, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm sure you all are eager to be here. I'm not really a public speaker, so you'll excuse me if I stumble a little bit. I hope, anyway. I'd like to thank Abdullah for stealing my thunder. I was going to open up with the same preamble to the Declaration of Independence, I think it was. "We hold these truths to be self-evident." I'm not so sure that really counts anymore, you know? I think a lot of our people are not really tied into that concept that all men are created equal. But I diverge. I'm sorry. We're here to talk about proclamations, which are statements to celebrate, or to honor and celebrate what we value. And if that's not the basis for education, I don't really know what is. I believe it was Socrates or Aristotle, I get them confused, that pointed out that education is the lighting of a fire, not the filling of a vessel. And we have to have something to light that fire with students. I'm a retired teacher, retired in 2020 after teaching for 21 years. And I lost my train of thought there, I'm sorry. The things that we honor, that we celebrate, they say things to our students. They're the first thing we start with that kind of lay the groundwork. Students really aren't, they don't really, they don't always pay attention to what you're saying. And sometimes they pay a lot more attention than you think they do. And I guarantee you that these proclamations that honor Spanish heritage, LGBTQ issues, Juneteenth, African-American Month, they all make an impression on them, whether it's a conscious thing that they're going to stand up and fight for, or whether, just in the back of their mind, they understand that it's honored by our society, our culture, our education. You know, I had no idea when I first started teaching. I was a commercial artist for years, and then I switched to education thinking, well, this is a cherry job. I'm done by the time it's, what, kids get out at 2:45? I'm off. It's time to go home and just call it a day. Maybe I can take up painting. It's the hardest job I ever had. These teachers, they'll admit. It was like, I cried my first night after I actually faced the kids. I went home and cried. So I'm running out of time here, but so I'd just like to say that, you know, if you're against these proclamations, are you-
Thank you. Thank you. Anita Carson, and on deck is Chels Davis.
Hi, y'all. I know the board all knows me. I appreciate you listening to the wide group of diverse people that have come forward today. that have come forward today. Our proclamations and our special recognitions have always been the happy moment in our school board meetings. They've always been the thing where we get to recognize businesses that have helped us out there, places where we recognize individual students, where we recognize amazing leaders in our community. We had J.J. Corbett take the African American History proclamation last year, and he had a standing ovation for the amount of history that he shows in this community. They haven't been divisive ever before. And they weren't until June of this year. And it's hard for me to see that and not take that as specifically directed at one community. And now it feels like we are saying we would rather take all proclamations and all of those happy moments away than address a specific community existing in our world. That's horrific. They are already under attack. They're already not feeling seen or heard. This will make more people leave the classrooms. We have a shortage of teachers. That harms every single student. I've heard a lot today about the concept of politicalization and that this proclamation process is politicizing these identities. But realistically, these identities aren't political in and of themselves. They've been politicized as a tactic to make it easier for Boards to say, we don't want to get political. Being queer isn't political in and of itself. It's just an identity. Being black isn't political. It's an identity marker. If you allow the politicization of our communities to take away our ability to recognize the beautifully diverse community we have, you are taking away the support that the Board has been seen as amazing before. There's no reason for us to take it away now that it's deemed political when it wasn't before. These are people. That's it. People. And we're wanting to recognize that they exist in our communities. That shouldn't be divisive. Think about the people who are telling you it is because they're also calling to remove actual supports from mental health from our students as well. So now they don't want them to be seen, heard, or get help. Think about who you're listening to when you are making your decision today. I would hope that you will continue supporting all of our diverse communities, and I hope you made the right decision today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carson. Chels Davis.
Hi, I'm Chels Davis. I am currently the only school counselor at Boone Middle School. So I was a little late getting here today. Please don't remove proclamations. I understand that it is easier to sidestep issues that have become wedge issues in our community right now. It's easier to avoid the issue altogether. And I know y'all could use a break. I think we all could. But not on this one. Not here. Not with our students' confidence in us on the line. Polk County schools are guided by a simple value. I've heard it a few times tonight: students first. We have a great motto: students first. That's every student. That's LGBT students. That's disabled students. That's students of every heritage, every life circumstance. We care for all of them. And bluntly, our kids aren't stupid.
Can we please be respectful of our speaker? Thank you.
Thank you. So to be blunt, our kids aren't stupid. They see what's going on here. They see us here choosing not to celebrate our differences for the sake of not upsetting a loud minority. They see their role models, us, cowering to a bully instead of standing up for them like we teach them. They see our hypocrisy, and we deserve their scrutiny. We cannot sit here and wear shirts embroidered with students first while rejecting the differences that make our community the thriving ecosystem that it is. Our students are watching. They understand, and they hear what we are saying when we don't speak up for them. Please do not remove proclamations from our community. We must set the example as educators and as people who live in Polk County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. That concludes our public comments for items on the agenda. I'm going to ask that we take a brief 10-minute recess before we move on. We've been going for about two hours, so I think everybody could stand to stretch for a minute. So we will be back at 7:07. Good evening. If I could have everyone take a seat, please? We can get back to our agenda. I need everyone in a seat or in the overflow room, please. We have... I need everyone in a seat or in the overflow room, please. We have to keep the aisles clear. All right, first, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. I know it's been a long evening, but we have to keep quiet. The first set of minutes will be for July 25th, 2023, school board meeting. And I will seek a motion to approve the minutes from the July 25th, 2023, school board meeting.
Second.
Dr. Allen and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be for the July 25th work session. So I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes of the July 25th, 2023 work session meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Our next set of minutes will be from June 27th work session. So I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 27th, 2023 work session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And our last set of minutes will be the June 13th work session. I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13th, 2023 work session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be our consent agenda. I'll now seek a motion for approval of the August 22nd, 2023 consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none, oops, sorry. Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note, M1, since this one actually came up in public comment, and reflecting last week, I did send an email to Superintendent Hyde to clarify on that particular agenda item as it related to Bay Care in cooperation with Winter Haven Hospital, and I was just seeking more context on that one. So Superintendent Hyde, if you can maybe speak to that one and what you had responded to me about that agenda item?
Certainly, and this similar response was provided to the constituent who spoke earlier as well, who inquired as to why we need these services. So first and foremost, this is a longstanding contract that we have had well over 15 years. We have maintained this contract. And again, this is a contract, and the budgeted amount is the maximum amount we could spend. We are billed on a regular basis. This contract, in comparison to the previous contract, has actually been reduced by over $200,000. Additionally, new language was put into the contract to ensure that we would not be billed for no-show appointments. These are for school-based services. Obviously parental consent has already been provided. These are for our students who have IEPs or Individualized Education Plans. This is required by federal law. It's also required by state law. It also ensures that we're in compliance with House Bill 7026, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act, and House Bill 7030, which is a similar bill. And so again, these are our students who require mental health supports. All services are provided at the school level, which eliminates any barriers to our families or our students as far as transportation needs. And so it's done during the school day. They embed themselves. In many instances, these staff are considered an extension of the school-based staff. However, as I shared with Dr. Allen, given the longstanding nature of this contract, it will be one that we review and consider putting out an RFP for to determine whether or not there are other contract providers that we could use in the same capacity throughout the district. I'm not saying we would necessarily negate this contract at all. It's simply a matter of, is there a better price? The $75 per visit cost that we have here is well under the national average for what therapeutic services cost. And so that's anywhere from $90 to $200 for therapeutic services and supports. And again, these are some of our most fragile students. So this is not a new program or a new process. In fact, I think the board would appreciate the refinements that have been done in the reduction of the contract. And the reduction of the contract was not because we did not have the need last year or going into this same school year as we did last year, but Ms. Williams and her team have been working to grow our own staffing. And so to a point that was mentioned earlier by one of our stakeholders, the intent is to pull these back within the school district and provide those services and supports. But again, I want to make sure it's clear that these are not something, this is not something that's new, nor is it something we do haphazardly or just simply because it's a pedagogical or philosophical opinion of ours. This is a mandate by federal policy and state requirements to make sure that we're adequately serving our students of need.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Superintendent Hyde. And I was going to draw attention also to O4. And this one is an articulation agreement with the University of South Florida. Last go-round during our public meeting, I brought forward a couple of the other articulation agreements that we have with other colleges around our area, whereas so this allows our students to pursue dual enrollment. Just came through advising season at Florida Southern College and had a chance to advise with several students from Polk County and hear from them the impact that dual enrollment had in their journey here in Polk County and the impact that's going to have for them to double major, to pick up an extra minor, but also save thousands of dollars on their education as well. So just wanted to draw attention to that as I give approval on this consent agenda that is accessible to our students. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, would you like to introduce any new administrators?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have a page full instead of two pages like last time. We will start with Ms. Talley Kendrick. She was previously the Senior Director of School Improvement. She's now been promoted to Acting Assistant Superintendent of the Middle School Region.
Good evening, Mr. Hyde and school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to serve my community. I'm a proud product of Polk County Public Schools. I attended Griffin Elementary School, Kathleen Middle School, and Lake Gibson High School. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank those who have impacted me the most during my time. I would like to thank Deputy Superintendent Green, Chief Collins, as well as the educators who've made a difference in my life. They're here with me today. That would be Mrs., I'd like to say Dr. Clint Wright first, because he was actually my middle school principal, and he saw something in me, and he pulled me to the side and he said, "You can be whatever you want to be." And so, thank you, Dr. Clint Wright. Mrs. Charlene Brinson, Mrs. Patricia Barnes. I'd also like to thank my mentors who have helped me through my principalship. That would be Mr. Brett Butler and Mrs. Eileen Killibrue. Mr. Hyde, school board members, thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to serving the community in which I grew up in.
Congratulations. Does anybody want to bring down for pictures?
Yes, absolutely, my family.
I know Pat Barnes isn't going to try and stay back there and hide. Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Next up is George Millar, Assistant Director for Transportation and Operations, who's being promoted to Director for Transportation and Operations.
Board members, Superintendent Hyde, thank you so much for the privileges to come tonight. I just want to say it's humbling, and I'm honored to accept this position. It's great. And as I've said throughout my career here at Polk County, this is the best group of people I've ever worked with in my entire career. It's a privilege and a pleasure to come to work every day. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Jeanette Aguilar, Assistant Principal II at Citrus Ridge Civics Academy, is being promoted to Assistant Principal Bethune Academy. I do not see her. Gretchen Arzillo, Assistant Principal II at Lake Gibson High School, excuse me, was promoted to Assistant Principal at Lake Gibson Middle School. She is not in attendance this evening. Rhea Cleveland, Assistant Principal II at Bartow Middle School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Doris Sanders Learning Center.
Hey, guys, I just want to say thank you so much. It's been an opportunity. I was at Bartow for eight years, and now I'm at Doris Sanders. And in case y'all don't know, this is a center school. Oh, I love ESC. Someone's found my passion for me. So thank y'all so much for that. I can't, I just look forward to great things. Y'all come visit our school because we're doing amazing things already. Well, in the week and a half, we're doing amazing things. So I invite all of you, come out and visit us and see what we're doing out there. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Freddie Cole, Behavior Interventionist at Inwood Elementary School, is being promoted to Acting Assistant Principal at Paget Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody. I've been down a little bit. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. It's such an honor. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve our Polk County community. This is my third year in the county, and I've been mentored by some of the greatest people, Mr. John Hill and Ms. Talley Kendrick, who was here earlier. So I'm just grateful for the opportunity and looking forward to serving. Thank you.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kyle Gira, Assistant Principal II at Lakeland High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at George Jenkins High School.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Mr. Superintendent Board, thank you for this opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal at George Jenkins High School. I'm honored to be able to work with this great staff and an amazing administrative team under the direction of Mr. Patton. One incredible team of professionals. Really thrilled to be there. I would also like to thank the staff and leadership at Lakeland High School. It was a true privilege to be able to work with them in the role of AP2 over the past two years. Finally, I would like to thank my family for being supportive of me as I transitioned through these roles. I look forward to the new leadership position and the opportunities for growth that it will provide. It is my goal to be the best servant leader that I can be in the role of Assistant Principal at George Jenkins. Mr. Superintendent Board, thank you again for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mario Jenkins, Assistant Principal II at Tennerock High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Auburndale High School.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to give honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for everything. I want to thank my wife for 28 years, Quadria, for believing in me and giving me favor with God and man. I want to give honor to my children, Omari Mason, my parents, Walter and Donna Jenkins. They've impacted my life in so many ways for raising me right and in the fear and admonition of the Lord. I thank you for raising me. My mentor and life coach, Mr. Ernest Joe, for not letting me settle for mediocrity. My professional mentors, Donna Drism, John Hill, Julie Grace, Jason Looney, and Dr. Sally Brisbane Stone, for your wisdom and guidance. My current principal, Mr. Todd Bennett, for your leadership and integrity and transparency. I've learned so much from you in just a couple of weeks. I thank you for your leadership. My Regional Superintendent Tracy Collins, for not forgetting about me and vouching for me. The memory of my late principal, Mr. Richard Lewis, Lake Gibson High School, class of 1991. He was a great educational leader, showed me what educational leadership looked like, and I honor him. Finally, to Mr. Hyde and to this great Board of, uh, School Board, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. I look forward to serving Polk County schools.
Congratulations. Come on, Todd. Todd, you're not coming down? I mean, he can do one with family, then you can jump in as well. Congratulations. Making a return appearance in Polk County Public Schools, Mr. Damian Jones, previously principal in DeSoto County Public Schools, has recently been appointed to an Assistant Principal at Dennison Middle School. He was previously employed in Polk County Public Schools and had a stellar record with us.
Hello, thank you, everyone on the board. Thank you, Dr. Hyde, for welcoming me back here to Polk County. Very excited to be back. Went away for a couple of years, had some great experiences down in DeSoto County. Definitely glad to be back home. My family is definitely glad that I'm back home in their absence tonight. So again, thank you for welcoming me back, and I look forward to what the future may bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Did he get your picture? Not official without a picture. Next is Erica Morse, Assistant Principal II at Auburndale High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Auburndale High School.
Hi, good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight, not being an ed major. I've been an educator for the last 19 years, and I've been supported, taught, and mentored by some of the most amazing individuals to whom I own a great deal of gratitude. First, I'd like to thank the Lord for leading me down this path. I'd like to thank my family for supporting and sacrificing to make this possible. My parents, Jeff and Jane, my husband Andy and his parents, Mary Beth and Cecil, and my children, Jake, Olivia, and Emily. Thank you. I would also like to thank my professional mentors who have shaped and believed in me and guided me endlessly, to Mr. Brett Butler, Mr. Harry Williams, Mr. Ty Bruno, Mr. Dan Talbot, Mr. Alan Dujie, Ms. Tracy Collins, and Mr. Hyde. Thank you so much. And I'd also like to honor the late Johnny Jackson, who started my career as an administrator. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Todd Bennett for allowing me the opportunity to serve the wonderful Auburndale community. And I'm so grateful and humbled to have this opportunity, and I promise to serve and lead others to the best of my abilities. Thank you, and go Hounds!
Congratulations. Next is Ms. Heather Powers, Assistant Principal II from Citrus Ridge Civics Academy, is being promoted to Assistant Principal, Citrus Ridge Civics Academy.
Hello, good evening. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to continue serving our students of Polk County. That's it, I didn't have anything planned.
Congratulations. Next is Ms. Lisa Provino, Assistant Principal at Auburndale High School, who is now being promoted to Assistant Principal at McLaughlin Academy.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I would like to thank my friends and my family for all the support that they've given me through this journey. Their love and encouragement has always pushed me forward to achieve my goals. I want to thank my leaders and mentors. Without, um, without guidance, I would probably not be down this path. Buddy Thomas for taking a chance on me. Mr. Tom Patton for being my mentor and always showing me a different side of things. Mr. Ty Bruno for allowing me to solidify my footing and allowing me to find my voice. To Dr. Deborah Wright, thank you for allowing me to experience collaboration and keeping an open door. Lacey Emmerling for taking my calls and always letting me do all the data that my heart could stand. And I cannot, in good conscience, not mention Johnny Jackson. He was not my principal, but with his encouragement was always there and he was always kind to me. I want to thank Ms. Tracy Collins for the faith provided in me. And Mr. Hyde, while I miss seeing Freddie every day, walking with purpose. I am so proud and so honored to be at my position at McLaughlin Academy. It is my intention to make all of you very proud of me and the work that I do while serving the community of Lake Wales and Polk County schools.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And in true McLaughlin style, they turned out. They always turn out to support their people. Let's take one with family and then we'll put our students in there. Okay, let's get the rest of the group in. The Mr. Marvin Reeves, Assistant Principal II at Winter Haven High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal, Winter Haven High School.
Good evening, my name is Marvin Reeves. I am a product of the Polk County School Board system. I'm first generation Polk County. Born and raised in Lake Wales, Florida, I am a Lake Wales Highlander. And I am very appreciative for the opportunity that has been given to me and I won't let you down. Thank you very much.
Great job, sir. Next is Robert Schott, Assistant Principal II from Sleepy Hill Middle, is now being promoted to Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle.
Good evening, everyone. Try this, "Good evening, guys, thank you." I'd like to thank the board. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Hyde for the opportunity to lead here in Polk County. Very excited, um, and I hope I'm able to make a difference.
Next is Hakim Schwell, Assistant Principal II at Bartow High School, being promoted to Assistant Principal at Gauze Academy. Not in attendance tonight. Todd Simmers, Assistant Principal II at Bartow High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Bartow High School.
Thank you, guys, for having me, it's an honor. Thank you Superintendent Hyde and your team, thank you Board members. Man, I have so many people to thank, but I will go ahead and table that. I'll be sending out individual thank yous for that, to respect everybody's time. You guys know who you are. So many people have helped me along the way. I want to definitely send a shout out to Principal Lance Lawson of Bartow High School and the IBU, uh, Head of Schools, Mandy Craven. Of course, my amazing principal who is here, because I'm at Summerlin Academy, Dr. Downing, our Commandant. So thank you for coming tonight. What a commitment and an honor, and I do appreciate it. Got a couple more, uh, just people to thank while I have this time. Ms. Deloach, my third grade elementary teacher from Carlton Palmer Elementary, who at an early age, although I didn't realize it, really had the concept of the whole child and recognizing individual students or who they are, and really just brought that out. So I try to continue that on. My parents, my father, who taught me to commitment, following through, and loyalty and accountability. Of course, my mother, who taught me to embrace and have tolerance and empathy and be fairly reflective, and that's helped me along the way. And last but not least, my wonderful family is here. My lovely wife and children, who are just my lighthouse on that rocky shore, and they really drive everything I do. So to our team, we're doing amazing things. Summerlin Academy and Bartow, so thank you again for your guys' time and I appreciate it. Look forward to it.
Congratulations. They remembered that you have to take a picture. Come on down, you didn't want to come down and get in a picture? You're welcome, sir, congratulations. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Kimberly Slyfer, Assistant Principal II at Bullberry High School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Davenport High School.
Good evening, thank you, Members of the Board, Superintendent Hyde. I remember leaving the classroom to become an instructional coach. I had made an impact on my 180 students, but there's so many more students that could still use my help as our brand-new teachers needed help. My passion in education became to support new teachers and feeling confident in their role and finding a love for the classroom. God blessed me with three wonderful years as an instructional coach. But now, as an administrator, I can make school-wide impacts. I now strive to support my 120 teachers so that I can help 2,400 students feel at home, successful, and ready for their future. I am so grateful for God's guidance throughout this journey, grateful to have a husband that is proud of my career and has supported my growth since day one. Grateful for parents and a sister that love and pushed me towards success. Thank you to Ashley Gambrell and Kaylee Mullenix for being my confidants every single day. Huge shout out to Kaylee Kish for being the best mentor to guide me from teacher to coach and now fellow administrator. I am immensely grateful to Mr. Young and the admin team at Mulberry High School. That school is a well-oiled machine and they taught me so much in one year. Thank you to Ms. Collins for your guidance and support. And finally, thank you to Mr. Dujie for helping me feel like a Bronco from day one and continuing to guide me on this path of leadership.
Congratulations. Madam Chair, that concludes recognition of new administrators.
Thank you Superintendent Hyde. Next on our agenda will be Item P1, Lake Region High School Naming of the Football Field in Honor of Stephen White. And I will now hear a motion to approve Lake Region High School Naming of the Football Field in Honor of Stephen White to be named Stephen White Stadium. Mr. Sharpless and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Mr. Sharpless, did you want to read your...
Sure. I'm going to read my letter of support for actually all three, the first three items. Superintendent Hyde, I stand in support of Lake Region High School's request for naming of three athletic buildings, which are Stephen White Stadium, football, Randy Howes of Pain, weight room, and John Bridges Softball Complex for softball. The attached letters detail the accomplishments of each honoree named above and how their service to students and the community has been a helpful part of this dedication. On behalf of Lake Region and myself, I ask that this request be taken into consideration in the naming of the above athletic buildings. Respectfully, Justin Sharpless, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do we have, I believe, is Mr. White, or do we have some representatives here? Mr. White, can I call you up to be recognized?
Welcome back.
Walk of Fame.
Board members, Mr. Hyde, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Fields, y'all been here a long time.
And that's just today.
No, you know, I'm representing the number-one staff and number-one students. It's not about me, really. And to just to give you a real brief history of what, how this all happened. By the way, my wife Wendy is here. And Dr. Stewart and Susan Stewart are here. And Dr. Stewart's here because he's the reason for all this. He's the one that appointed me. But when we opened up Lake Region High School in 1995, the stadium was not complete. And there was a reason for that. In 95, the budget was tight, you remember. So we shared the stadium with Dennison. We, the students and the, Mr. Tucker and myself, we got along fine, but the booster groups, it caused a major problem. So, eh, so the, my number-one staff and my numbers, numbers, two, one, number-one students, along with me as their guidance, begged the School Board to loan us the money to finish our stadium. And they did. And the way that we paid for it is we took a percentage of our tickets from football, soccer, baseball, band, dances, and we sent a percentage to the School Board. We did that for about four or five years and somebody over here liked us and forgave us. And then we held, we didn't, we didn't have celebrations at Lake Region High School. We called them thunderbations. And we had a huge thunderbation and we celebrated and we burned the mortgage, so to speak. So that's the, that's the story of how we got our stadium. And so I appreciate the honor. And I will only represent those number-one students and staff who now have ownership because they had to give a little bit, because part of their gates were going into getting this stadium built. So, Dr. Stewart, Susan Stewart, my wife, and the Board members, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'd like to get a picture with your family as well. Yeah. Sorry, you've been called by name, you have to come now.
There's no option.
Susan, you've been called by name. That's the rule.
Come on, don't be shy.
Well, wait, don't you worry.
We're good.
It's a night out on the town.
Well, I wanted to mention Seth Lampert is here. Mrs. Hardy couldn't come, but Seth Lampert came as our representative.
Nice.
Ms. Hardy's moving into a new house.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Action Item P2, Lake Region High School Naming the Weight Room in Honor of Dr. Rand, uh, sorry, in honor of Randy Howes. And it will be named Randy Howes of Pain. So I will seek a motion to approve Lake Region High School's Naming of the Weight Room in honor of Randy Howes to be named Randy Howes of Pain.
So moved.
Mr. Sharpless and Ms. Fields, any discussion? I know you've already read your letter. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do we have someone here for the Randy Howes of Pain? They left, okay. Well, we will make sure that we send them our congratulations. I also am not sure who came up with that name, but it might be one of the best names we have on any of our buildings, so kudos to them. Action Item P3 is Lake Region Naming of the Softball Field in Honor of John Bridges. So I will now seek a motion to approve Lake Region High School Naming of the Softball Field in Honor of John Bridges to be named John Bridges Softball Complex.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sharpless and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And do we have John or family members here? Anyone? He left as well. Well, we will send him our congratulations as well. Next, we have Item P4, which is Rochelle School of the Arts Naming of the Herman Jenkins, naming an, of, naming a lab in honor of Herman Jenkins. So I'll seek a motion to approve the Rochelle School of the Arts Naming of the Fabrication Lab in honor of World War II Army Veteran, Mr. Herman Jenkins.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller, any discussion?
I'd like to read the letter that I sent to Superintendent Hyde. I have received a request from Carol Griffin, Principal of Rochelle School of the Arts, to name the Fabrication Lab in honor of Mr. Herman Jenkins, a graduate of Washington Park High School and a World War II Army veteran. Please find meeting minutes reflecting unanimous approval of this request from the School Advisory Council. In the early 1950s, Mr. Jenkins taught himself photography and set up a photography studio in his home where he took pictures and developed them in his home. He had many jobs in Lakeland after leaving the Army, but his legacy to the African-American baby boomers is that of being a great photographer. I am requesting that the Fabrication Lab at Rochelle School of the Arts be named in his honor, the Herman Jenkins Fabrication Lab. If this request meets your approval, I'm requesting that this be on an upcoming School Board meeting agenda, which is tonight. And I understand that Mr. Jenkins is 104 years old. And that's amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
And one of the things that I always say is give people flowers while they can see them and smell them. So he's still alive and I'm sure he's going to be excited to know that something has been named in his honor.
Thank you, Ms. Fields, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And is Mr. Jenkins or some... And is Mr. Jenkins or someone from his family here this evening? Hello?
Good evening, Superintendent, the board, and Principal Ms. Carol Griffin from Rochelle School of the Arts. Indeed, I'm certainly honored to be here on behalf of my uncle, Uncle Herman. And he is 104 years old. This is a person who's actually lived through two pandemics. And he did do World War II. And I recall being about like five, six years old and I was at his house on one occasion. He was building a darkroom. I said, Uncle, why are you building a darkroom when we have light in the house already? Why do we need a darkroom? And so he showed me just tons of film that he had just goofed up on. But he taught himself through encyclopedia to actually build a darkroom and develop film to take photos of people of color back during the 50s, 60s, during that period of time. So I'm definitely honored to be here on behalf of him and I'll get whatever it is to him by the weekend. But he's 104 and he's, he's doing well. And again, Ms. Griffin, thanks so much. I'm Rochelle Elementary myself. My son was in the first year of the School of the Arts. In the first year, it was in September. So I'm just indeed honored for the school board just to present my uncle with this declaration. Thanks so much. I use declaration too.
Can we also ask Mr. Coney to come up with them, please? He's on the advisory council.
Yes?
Next on the agenda is item P5, discontinuing proclamations.
Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to table this topic until we have further discussion. I know for a fact that in the past 15 years or so, proclamations have been something that we've done here in Polk County. I think we're elected, we're paid a full teacher salary with benefits to make hard decisions and have hard conversations. And I think getting rid of all of them is not appropriate for this county. Mr. Purvis and I have had a lot of conversations and I respect you very much when you said there's some of them that absolutely are important to students. I know my son went to public school here in Polk County. And as someone with a disability, I usually had to explain to people what it was like to even know him. He wasn't even recognized. So I know what it meant to me as a family years ago if I was on the school board. And I know what it means to other families. Hispanic heritage, I know what it means. We are a major, we are no longer the minority, the minority is the majority, Hispanic students. It's important for these children to see themselves and it's important in their education. I, I have talked to the superintendent. I don't think that we went about this the right way. I don't think they're trying to make a motion in a work session and then adding it to an agenda is the proper way to do it. There should have been further discussion. We can do two things. We can have the superintendent go and make some kind of template and talk about what we do want to have included in proclamations that are very important to our students. And it might not be all of them and it might not make everyone happy, but that's also our job. We're here to represent the entire district and have really hard conversations. And I think this is a very easy way out to throw them all out. And so I am not able to support this tonight because we have not vetted this fully.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Ms. Fields with the second? Any discussion?
May I?
Mr. Sharpless was first, I believe. Mr. Sharpless?
Sure. I've coached many parliamentary procedure teams in FFA. And this actually is out of order because you first have to have a motion on the floor before you can table it. So there is no motion on the floor right now, so we can't table something that's not on the floor. Well, Board Member Miller, I think after the motion is made, then you can move to table the motion.
I believe the motion was to table the item.
Correct, but you have to have the item on the floor first.
If I might, if I might.
I apologize. I did seek West's advice.
Yeah, if I might. You, a, a school board member, it is possible for the superintendent to pull the item. But for a school board member, I think, I think Mr. Sharpless is correct. The, the appropriate thing would be to wait until the motion is made and then make a motion to lay on the table. A motion to lay on the table requires a second, but it is not debatable. So if you make the motion and it is seconded, it will move immediately to a vote without debate.
Also, if it is late on, correct, West, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's late on the table at this meeting, then the motion is dead.
No, if it's late on, on the table at this meeting, it needs to be taken up at the next meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Or, or a, or a time certain.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll first seek a motion. The recommended motion is to discontinue the issuance of proclamations. Does someone want to make the motion? We can't do anything until someone makes a motion or chooses not to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to stop the proclamations. Our number one job is safety. Proclamations are a distraction that creates anxiety and division in the community.
We just need the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. See, I forgot. I thought it started to become a politician then. Sorry about that. I like to make a motion.
Mr. Nolte has made a motion to discontinue the issuance of proclamations.
Do I need to restate the notion, Madam Chair?
Second for discussion.
Sure, I'll second that.
Dr. Allen with the second? Any discussion?
Now, Madam Chair, I would like to take this opportunity to table this motion until further discussion. On keeping the proclamations that are important to this community.
So you had not been called on, but
Sorry.
to have discussion before, we're going to have discussion before we do that. Ms. Fields was next on deck.
Well, I would say that I'm a little bit confused on the process. My comments are the same as they were last month. I, I value proclamations and what they bring to the table. I personally have learned so much through proclamations. Especially when our staff come, like the mental health counseling month, when we learn about things that otherwise we might not know. The, the child abuse month that we celebrate. There are so many reasons to embrace our differences and understand that we might not all agree. But at the end of the day, we're supposed to be a reflection of every student that we serve in our school district. We're supposed to be. And so I don't understand how having a proclamation takes away from learning. As a matter of fact, it helps the students to learn, in my opinion. I have had many emails, which I'm sure many of you all have as well. And there was one email that really stood out to me. And I'm going to read it. And this email is from Mr. and Mrs. Cash. And they are from District 2. Extreme Board. My family and I are long-term Polk County residents who have successfully had two children complete their K through 12 education in Polk County. One went on to school at Ridge Tech. One attended Haynes City IB and is currently attending Polk State. Our youngest is still a middle school student at DSA. We have always had wonderful experiences with our children's varied abilities and interests that have truly allowed them to thrive. My children have the benefit of being white and middle class. As a Polk County educator, as a Polk County educator, I am well aware, this is not the experience or even the diversity of every family we serve. Proclamations honor the beautiful diversity of our county. They tell the minority and the marginalized that they are seen, they are honored, they are valued. The fact that a vocal minority can intimidate a board of thoughtful, educated adults into ignoring the diversity of these groups instead of celebrating it is deeply concerning. If as a district, we are truly honoring the motto of students first, to do away with proclamations not only does not reflect the motto, it demeans it by insinuating that the wonderful diversity within our county is irrelevant. I would urge you as elected officials to seriously reflect on what message doing away with proclamations sends to student, staff, and the greater community. With regards, Thomas and Janet Cash, District 2. I think that sums it up pretty well for me. I think it's an educational tool. I don't see how it impacts education, how it lessens education. And one of the things that I want to say that's not directly relevant, but I guess it is. Someone tonight made a comment that just really hurt my heart. Our teachers work their behind off each and every day. They don't get paid much or nothing. And someone said, a real teacher. What's a real teacher? Everyone that go into the classroom, roll up their sleeves and work hard for our students, I hope they're a real teacher. If they're not, why do we have them here? And I would just say this, be mindful of our words. Words hurt. Words hurt. If you can't say something nice about somebody, just be quiet. And so I am not in support of doing away with proclamations.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And I believe I hit the button too quickly. Mr. Sharpless, do you still have comments? Okay. Mr. Nolte?
Okay, I was a teacher, 36 and a half years. I taught here for 10 years in Polk County. We never had proclamations. I don't remember them at all. And each teacher I knew.
That was not for you, that was.
Okay. I was going to say, wow, what did I do wrong this time? Okay. Each teacher I knew when you went into the classroom. I taught physical education, so whenever it rained, we were inside the classroom. Every teacher I knew and talked with was positive. And they made their kids feel like they were the best. They got that from the classroom teacher back in the 90s. I taught with Medulla through Jesse Keane Elementary School. That was 30 some years ago. Our society has changed so much since then. It saddens me that well, just like, like in here tonight and then last time, it was, it's raucous. Our heads have got to pop on the old wooden block. And it's, it's really saddens me that I don't really want to do with proclamations, but we have to now, I feel, because it's so divisive. It's just like it's, like in the Old West, it's like a mob mentality somewhat. You get everybody together and they do their thing and we need to be Americans first, Polk Countyans. We need to educate our, our children. We need to show them how to live. We don't need to make someone else that doesn't think our way feel bad. We just need to be.
No comments.
We need to work as hard as educating our students how to read and write, learn our Constitution, all our awesome, awesome country we live in, all our paperwork. As hard as we did to try to do this tonight and the last time. Let's all get together. Let's all make everybody feel, look, I see heads shaking out there. I'm serious. We live in the greatest country in the world. And we're just blowing it up right now from inside. Let's stop all this quabbling. Let's all just get along and let's put our children first, their education. And I think that the schools, the principals, the teachers, the, the super, the lunchroom people, the custodians, we all need to work together. We don't need to just pull each other apart all the time. And that's why I feel that these, these proclamations, when we make them, they're decisive. We need to get back to the basics, get back to education and get out of the political mess. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Ms. Miller.
I want to remind my colleague, there are students who never make it to the physical education field because they're in a hospital, they're in a hospital bed in a stretcher in one of our center schools with feeding tubes. And I think that's one thing that proclamations helped us understand. Never seemed divisive, other than the email that went out, which I did try to contact many people and I got a lot of great feedback. The last meeting was, there was divisive on both sides. People were very upset. But in the 15 years that I've been here as a community member involved in my schools without being paid to be, it was never a divisive topic. Veterans Day is not a divisive topic. Heartland for Children is not, is not a divisive topic. So you can make up division if that fits your narrative. But I have never seen that as a board member, other than the Pride proclamation. And I'll tell you, when I called the people that got the templated email that had some not so accurate information about how our kids are scoring, I would ask them, what proclamations do you want to see? And most of them agreed with everything, but they disagreed with the Pride proclamation. Well, then that's this conversation we need to have. I didn't talk to people, there were two people that told me, get rid of all of them. Everybody, everybody is the same, everybody is equal, you don't have them. Two out of all the phone calls and emails that I, that I contacted, trying to understand the other side of the table about proclamations. I can tell you that the pinwills about child abuse, that's not divisive. I haven't seen anybody in the room be upset about that. So we're not going to make a fraudulent forum that things are divisive. There's one major issue, the elephant in the room. People are very upset about the Pride proclamation. So have the conversation, do our jobs as elected officials. And we might come back and say, you know what, we're not going to do it. We're going to leave it to the county. But if the city and the county elected officials can be responsible, we need to be responsible elected officials and not try to take the side door of getting out of something that's been very positive in this district. So I think that's why my misunderstanding, I've been around a long time. I was a student of the 90s. But I was an advocate in this community for a long time. And I have never, this is the first time this conversation's ever happened. The man that sat in this chair before me read from the Bible and disagreed with the Pride proclamation. He had every right to do that with free speech. That was what he did. And he was an elected official. And if that's how you feel, that's what you should do. To try to get rid of all of them so you don't have to look political and you don't have to make decisions people don't like, I think is not, is not sound leadership. We have to have hard conversations. So I think it's about time we have them.
Just for the record, I want, I want to say that to my memory, Ms. Cunningham, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I think we have had proclamations ever since I've been on the board. I mean, that's 21 years. And I think that what Ms. Miller basically is saying is correct. I don't think we've ever had any opportunities and challenges. I know a couple of years ago, I think that was one of the issues that we had. And rather than to continue voting on proclamations, because we used to vote on proclamations, it was just saying that we would just acknowledge without voting. And so I think that if, if there is an issue that needs to be addressed, as Ms. Miller just referenced, then let's just vote it up, up or vote it down, but not do away with proclamations.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any further discussion? Dr. Allen?
All right, a statement that I heard tonight is being recognized matters. And I'm going to hold to that statement, but I'm going to propose a different angle that maybe nobody's going to be happy about. And that's okay. But I would say this, and it is a little alarming that if we've done proclamations for 26 years, yet we've not established a policy. That should be a concern to us. But in general, I'll read my thoughts here and keep the conversation moving. So I want to definitely thank, you know, well over 200 individuals that sent emails. Quantified, I didn't really break down the word count or anything like that, but I did read. And face-to-face conversations, phone calls, social interactions regarding this, this topic. And I would definitely reject or disagree with the opinion that some, somehow a small vocal minority is controlling this narrative. Now, and just because, I mean, there's nonpartisan, independents, libertarians, and several others that hold the same opinion regarding stopping the practice of proclamations. And here's some of the reasoning that I've heard far and wide, which include, one, I've got five of them, that I distilled from listening and reading and engaging. One, the necessity of devoting critical time to the business of educating students. Right? That's a reasonable one. That's a reasonable one. Two, the possibility of diverting attention away from some of our most pressing issues, which I would say at the core of our strategic plan is student outcomes. Number three, the controversy and divisiveness as demonstrated tonight in some capacity, not in all capacity. So I appreciate the logic, the rational discussion, the civility. I really appreciate that. I've learned by listening tonight. Number four, the possibility of inadvertently excluding or marginalizing certain groups which could alienate students. That's possible. Even by extracting, we'll do that as well. Number five, sometimes it's just, it just becomes this symbolic, rather than truly having a tangible impact on the lives of all students. And sometimes that could happen. Now, the fear of not feeling important, seen, or being valued as real. I engage that every day in my classroom, and I understand that. However, a decision to stop reading proclamations does not undermine our humanity. My opinion is that all students can be recognized. And I said it, being recognized matters. It was your words that said it, in the very back row on the edge, I believe, and that moved me tonight. And our policy, number 5451, it's entitled, "Student Recognitions." And I will hold to that, because this is what it states, "The school board values excellence and seeks to develop in students the desire to do their best in all things. It shall be the policy of this board, a policy, therefore to recognize outstanding accomplishment in curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular areas." My hopes are that we practice the policy that we have. Now, we discussed this extensively in our work session, and I asked what our procedures were in policy 9300, which I'm about to state here in a moment as well. And policy 5451 asks for procedures as well. We don't have those. And Superintendent Hyde transparently stated that, and I really appreciate that. Which tells me, practicing proclamations for twenty-six years with no policy or procedures is an issue. Now, it also says, "The board authorizes the superintendent to develop a plan for recognition of outstanding student achievement based on well-defined, consistent criteria and standards." And that's what we should ask of the superintendent to do. It's not here, but the policy is here. The procedures are not in regards to recognizing students. Students first. That's my first point in regards to being recognized matters. The policy is there to recognize our students, and it's a beautiful policy. Let's put it into practice. Also, policy 9300, "Awards Recognition and Incentives for Staff, School Volunteers, Advisory Committee Members, and Community Members," which states, "The school board values excellence and wants to recognize and thereby encourage..." Mr. Nolte just said that. "Staff members, school volunteers, advisory," and a lot of people said it tonight as well. "Advisory committee members, community members whose achievements and/or service exemplify the excellence that is our district standard. It shall be the policy of this board, therefore, that exemplary achievements and/or service of staff members, school volunteers, advisory committee members, and community members be appropriately recognized with meritorious, meritorious service awards." So, what do these policies allow? Superintendent Hyde, I'm asking you, can we recognize a Hispanic student that does something great?
Under current policies, yes.
Yes. And could we do that during Hispanic Month?
Yes.
Okay. Do these policies allow us to celebrate and recognize a black student who gained admittance to one of our nation's most prestigious college or university? Yes. Can we recognize a white female student for winning the national hackathon with superb coding skills? Maybe my daughter, one day? Yes. Can we recognize a gay student achieving national merit in the field of science? I would say yes. Can we recognize a group of students from multiple ethnicities who won a statewide academic quiz in Polk County this year, which we did? Yes. Now, again, if you feel that this vote undermines humanity, I adamantly disagree. Overall, I hold the opinion that the school board should not declare proclamations, but we should use the policy that's in place to recognize students and to recognize others around our community. So with that, I will not be voting, or I will be voting no to proclamations.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Mr. Sharpless?
I'm not going to repeat anything that's already been stated. I do want to add one point, though. Mr. Bridges stated in our last work session last month that proclamations are defined in state statutes dealing with municipalities and not school boards. I believe that's intentional, and municipalities should be the place that proclamations are given. I stated that last time. This isn't about recognizing or not recognizing a group, this is about the proper place for that to happen. I would also just echo Dr. Allen's statement. We do not need proclamations to recognize students and staff. We can already do this during the special recognition time at our board meetings. And so that's why I will be voting yes to discontinue proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Ms. Fields?
Does it, recognition policies say that student and staff? Or does it say students?
We have two separate policies, one for students and one for staff and beyond staff as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. I will-
Let me read the numbers, but go ahead.
Okay. I wasn't gonna read the email from Marissa Green, but I feel like I have to read it, because I think that, Dr. Allen, you are discrediting Marissa Green's work. I'm, my comments, that's my feeling.
Yeah, not at all.
But that's how I feel. And for you all to sit up here and say, "We've been doing proclamations for twenty-one-plus years, that all of a sudden, it's not in alignment with what we should be doing as an educational institution," because Mr. Bridges said that it basically comes from governmental entities, I don't know what to say.
There's simply no reference to proclamations in the law when it comes to school boards, that's all.
But it doesn't mean that we can't do it, because we've been doing it for twenty-one years, and, plus years. And Dr. Allen said that we didn't have anything in place. Well, we did have something in place. We had Marissa Green doing proclamations for a number of years. So I don't think Marissa Green was sitting and just flying by the seat of her pants. I think that she had a process in place, and she has it here. And she actually did read. And I'm gonna read it, and it's gonna be a few minutes, and hopefully, everybody will be respectful of that. And I'm gonna read the first paragraph, I don't think it's relevant. "I am compelled to provide my insight, because those who have seen me at board meetings knew it was my role. And I do not want it to be misconstrued that I did not handle the processing of proclamations appropriately. It is documented through my emails, that I would send routinely to senior directors, regional superintendents, principals, and other key staff, reminding them of the process to make a recognition or proclamation request. The link existed on the hub, and several times, I requested to my colleagues to make the link more prominent, so that it could be easily found. However, that did not happen. If there were proclamations that were not recognized at the school board meeting, it is because outside groups were not aware they could request one, and department heads did not bring a request forth. There was no internal or external public relations campaign to do so. Had this been done, there probably could have been less angst about this issue. There's no proclamation for Flag Day, Asian American History Month, IT Professionals Day, and the list goes on and on. Again, it takes someone passionate to make the request, or for department heads to remember they can do so. I used to be able to make presentations at the summer leadership meetings, explaining this and other parts of my role, such as managing special events, but towards the end, was no longer afforded the opportunity to do so. Those individuals who have made proclamation requests have faithfully done so for many years, and understood the importance of meeting the deadline. This is the reason, if you review board docs, why you would frequently see the same proclamations over and over again, just the facts. Not only did I manage proclamation requests, I had to make sure it was written correctly and properly formatted. To enhance the presentation, I would sometimes coach the requested to bring mementos for the dis to celebrate. For example, the year we were treated to desserts, this is the board, for Hispanic Heritage Month, was at my recommendation. In the past, I also recommended to staff to use the opportunity to recognize an employee or community member who received a proclamation as a way to boost morale and recognize leaders in the community for their unwavering service, like, and I'm saying this, like Mr. J.J. Corbett. Any recognition request made after deadline needed approval from the superintendent's office. This usually happened because the folks were waiting until the last minute, and happened a few times with proclamation requests." And then she just says she's a phone call away for any clarification. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands, Marissa Green did this, and she did this well. And after she left, if my memory serves me correctly, and Superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong, Shandra Hall started doing proclamations. So, I just want to make sure this is understood. Proclamations has not just been something, that we've just conjured up. It is something that we've been doing for a long, long enough time, and it might not be something in detailed writing, but there is or was a process. And I want to make sure that that's understood. I don't want anybody leaving away thinking that we don't, we didn't have a procedure or process in place.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, what a night, right? Two different board meetings. So here are my thoughts. I first want to thank everybody for coming out. It's awful late. And I really felt bad that the folks that were being introduced tonight, our new administrators, had to wait until all the public comments. And actually, you know, things do happen for a reason. I think it's quite a blessing that those people were all introduced tonight, where everybody in the room could hear and see the diversity in our admin. I, for one, am very proud that our district employs people of every nationality, every race, every background, every religion. We are very blessed. And I think tonight, when all those people came forward with their families, we had every faction of this county tonight represented. To me, that is diversity. That is inclusion. That is equity. Not a piece of paper proclamating X, Y, or Z. I've been on the board a while with Ms. Fields, her a little bit longer than I, and we've seen things come and go. I personally don't feel that the proclamation says as much as having a teacher in your classroom that looks like me. Having a principal in my school that looks like me. Having a cafeteria nutrition worker who looks and speaks my language to help me. That, to me, touches me. So, we've talked a lot about so many different things. I personally don't view it as one group against another group, liking this group, not liking that group, wanting this one, not wanting that. I'm not into what I call the nonsense. To me, that's nonsense. Guys, we're all human beings. We all bleed the same colored blood. I don't care where you come from and what your background is and what language you speak. So, I feel we need to do what's right, and I feel that we, I would uphold to do away with proclamations, because I feel that every child can be loved and nurtured. I heard so many of you come up tonight and say it was that one teacher who reached out to me, including me, when I was younger, and maybe saved me from a perilous future because somebody cared. But that wasn't a proclamation read at a school board meeting. I mean, really. I really feel, we're talking down to basics, human beings, regardless of what your background is, it doesn't matter. Just hug the person next to you and say, "Hey, we're in this together." And let our children know that they're loved, and that they're accepted, and that we accept all children, because we do. We are the public school system. And I'm very proud of that. So I don't feel that a proclamation does anything for our students. I didn't dig as deep. I respect you, Dr. Allen, for taking the time to do the research that you've done. But I think we can bring those children forward regardless of their background, and if it is a particular month, and there's a child that wins or does, and we need to recognize them, my goodness, there's always a few minutes at the beginning of our meetings, y'all have been here, to take the time, just like we recognize business partners, what is more important than recognizing a few of our kids for something that they did? And it doesn't have to be one something. Maybe they're president of a club, a pride club in one of the schools, whatever it is. If we need to help a child to become better at what they do, and to give them the recognition that they are a human being in our eyes, then we owe it to do that. But to me, the proclamation, which is what I'm hearing we're saying it would do, and I just don't feel that way. Being a mother, raising two kids, it's kind of like, we just need to be human beings, reach across the aisle and recognize individual human beings, a child, student, or a staff member, or a custodian who goes out of their way, cafeteria worker, bus driver, for crying out loud, they're the first person that welcomes the child into our school system, and the last one that they see at the end of the day. So, I will not be, I will be supporting the motion to stop the proclamations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Miller?
I appreciate Ms. Cunningham's comments and Mr. Allen's. They both reflected what's been so unfortunately divisive. So if a pride group comes from one of our schools that wants to be recognized, it was just said by two different board members, they would be. So that's a conversation that people don't want to have, and I just want to make sure that, I think it's in the heart of everybody on this board, to represent and protect all kids. I want the people in this audience to know that. I do have, I do have questions of what Mr. Allen had brought up. This is, you're just, what we're doing is just changing one thing from another, and if it makes it sound good by a label, I guess it's better. But what I need from the superintendent is specific instructions on how people, because I can tell you right now, disability awareness, I'll have fifteen kids up here, ready to celebrate. So we need, we still have to have parameters on what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. So I would like to have that conversation at a work session where he can present, you know, if it's Hispanic Heritage Month, who, how many students, how many community members, how that will look. And the ones that have been left out for years, you know, we have an entire military school with Summerlin Academy, we shouldn't be leaving the Veterans Day proclamations out at all, but how will that look, and who will we select? You know, you're still gonna get onto people being felt left out. So I think a lot of this is going back to do the homework on the how-to, and we've just exchanged one for the other. So I understand the why, I'm in politics. But I need, I need more, I need more clarification on the how. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dr. Allen?
Yeah, and just to, you know, continue that, is that's what we're commissioned to do, that's what we're elected to do. And, and I just want to say, on the record, I love Marissa Green, right? Violent, fierce, I mean, purple, all that. I was in Minnesota recently and wanted to get a picture in front of Prince's studio just to send to Marissa Green. But what she clarified for me is, I mean, the fact that we have a former employer, or employee, I'm sorry, a former employee sending us an email how a procedure or practice was done, that is an issue to me. You know, we're here to, you know, govern over our policy and our practices and our procedures. That is one of our primaries. So that was my concern, not, you know, whether she did it or didn't do it right, just the fact that I had, we had a former employee writing out something that was not present. And we've talked about succession planning. That was one of Superintendent Hyde's initiatives when we hired him, is we wanted to know, out of that fifty-two applicant pool- of that 52 applicant pool that Polk County had for the superintendent, which was the highest around the state, that we should have had more of our Polk County people in that applicant pool. So succession planning is just that. If we lose an employee, can that practice and that procedure continue, right? Whatever it is. That's the point that I was trying to make in regards to Ms. Green's email, and I love her, so she knows that, on record. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. And I just want to clarify, because there was some question, her superhero name is Violet Fierce, not Violent Fierce.
Oh.
There was some murmuring in the audience, so I just want to make sure that that is very clear.
I love it.
Um, I, before we go on, and I will come back to you, Ms. Fields, but I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then I know Superintendent Hyde would like to make a couple of comments. Really, one of the reasons that this all came about is, starting probably January, February of this year, Superintendent Hyde started receiving several requests for proclamations that were not from groups that even exist in Polk County. One of them that I can very clearly remember was April or May, and it was a group from Orlando that was having a 100-year celebration. They wanted a proclamation based on their involvement in our schools. We could not find what schools in Polk County they were involved in, yet they wanted a proclamation from us saying how great of a partner they were. So that's really where we started to look at, do we have a policy? What's the policy? Who's the person that can, is it any groups that are partners with us? Is it any group in the state of Florida? Is it any group in the United States? Do they have to live in Polk County? What does it look like? And so that really is where this started. I know there's been several since then. However, I, I agree with my colleagues that we have a mechanism to recognize our students and our staff and the people in Polk County that are doing great things. And that's what we should be doing at board meetings, is recognizing the people in our school district that are doing incredible things. We saw some tonight. We saw our United Way recipients that, I don't know that there's anybody more passionate about raising money for United Way than potentially Ms. Gregory or Mr. Van, and it's, they can duke it out most days, though Spessard Holland takes it every year. I don't know why they're even trying. But we saw that with Jen Lay tonight, who has dedicated so much time to Southwest Elementary School, making sure that they have the, the greatest ITV program that they can and being there to pour into those students, that those are the great things that we should be recognizing. Those are things that we already have policies about. I know Superintendent Hyde sent us some recommendations this morning of what a procedure would look like. I too, I think we all received Ms. Green's email, and I don't think that this conversation is anything about what she was doing or not doing. It was more, it needs to be codified of what the process is, to be advertised of, this is who it goes to, this is when it has to, to be approved, something that we can publish and have documented, so that when a staff member leaves, we have, we have it in writing. We know what the next person can do to pick up the torch and to make sure that, that it's being championed by someone. Superintendent Hyde, did you have additional?
Actually, Madam Chair, you, you addressed quite a few things. First and foremost, this was never a criticism of former employees. The issue is no organization can survive if the intellectual property resides with certain individuals. When they leave the organization, we are left with a gap. We are left with a void of information. Board members, I encourage you, nothing's been deleted from the hub. You are more than welcome, and you have direct access to the hub. Search it. No policy, no procedure exists. And I think we're conflating two issues, because the only thing that exists on the hub is a recognition document that is limited to only principals and directors. That's not recognition, that's, or it's not proclamations, it's not resolutions, it is solely for recognition of employees and students. And yet, it is so restrictive, it only allows for principals and directors to submit. And I think that's what's happening here, is we're conflating those two issues, because that is the only document that resides on the hub. And me, the entire intent behind this was, if we're going to do these, we're going to do them well, we're going to have a process in place that other entities have used successfully for years, and we would adopt a polit, an actual procedure that would ensure that when I depart, that there's actually a procedure that supports this initiative moving forward. In fact, we are doing a review of all board policies, and anytime it speaks to an issue where the superintendent shall develop procedures, I can tell you that we are now scouring for all of those documents. And what we're finding is, far too often, it resides with an individual. It does not reside in writing. And that's what we have to clarify, because again, we have turnover, we have a portion of our, of our team that is aging out, and we should not be reliant upon those individuals after the fact to reinform us as to what our procedure should be. Again, this was never a criticism, criticism of individuals. This was a criticism that within the absence of a written procedure, I'm not comfortable doing this, because I showed you the history. And how often do we miss the mark? With Black History Month, with Hispanic Heritage Month, with Disabilities Month, with Autism Month, Awareness Month, we missed the mark repeatedly. And I only gave you a five-year snapshot. I can't even imagine what it looks like before that. And I believe that that's a disservice. And to also clarify, as far as, as far as proclamations are concerned, if anyone believes that African-American and Black History Month is going away, or Hispanic Heritage Month is going away, they are wrong. This district will absolutely continue to honor and recognize those months and ensure, not just that we highlight them in that month, but as a district, we're ensuring that we're addressing those contents and those topics consistently throughout the year, because as you've heard repeatedly tonight, we are a melting pot. And that melting pot exists and it thrives because we share these mixed experiences that we've all had, and we all benefit from that narrative. There is no singular story of what it is to be American, and I think that that's important for us to recognize. And so I just wanted to clarify, and I appreciated Ms. Fields saying it as well, part of this is, there's no written procedure. We acknowledge that. So that's all we're seeking to do, that's all I initially sought to do with this, was not to do anything other than that. So I appreciate the opportunity to clarify.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Ms. Fields?
And Superintendent Hyde, I believe that, I do believe that your heart is in the right place when it comes to this. I will say this, and I'm going to be done with it, because I, I'm not a back-and-forth person. I don't have time for that, I'm too old. But I will say this. Marissa Green has the same right that everybody in this room has, if she want to have comments. She asked that, that the email be read into record. As a board member, I have a right to do that if I choose to. You might not like it, I don't really care, but I'm going to do what I think is right. And so with that said, I'm done with it. I think that we're at a place now where we need to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. I have Dr. Allen still on the list, and then we can call for a vote.
Yep, indeed. And this, this is coming, because I, I feel like this motion needs to be amended, and Wes Bridges, you can maybe speak to this a bit, it does need to be codified, because at this point, when we vote on this, this is only going to be reflected in our minutes. So I would like to, and under your suggestion, but amend the motion that this be added to Policy 9300, as it relates to awards, recognitions, and incentives for staff, school volunteers, advisory committee members, and community members.
I'm, I'm sorry, you, that what be added specifically?
That would be, it would be added to that policy.
That what would be added to that policy?
Well, see, we had this discussion during work session, and it became very confusing, because there's no policy that existed. So we're voting, are we voting as the motion on the floor to eliminate the practice of?
Yeah, the, the only motion on the floor is to discontinue the practice of proclamations.
Period.
All right.
And the school board can come back at any time and, and direct the development of policies and procedures.
Okay.
For whatever sort of recognition that you'd like.
All right.
Okay.
I'll leave it standing.
Yes.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I had one thing. I'd just like, for my colleagues, if we've stepped down to give proclamations for 20-something years, and we just now decided that we're not going to do it, if there's other things that we're doing, I think they need to be brought ahead way ahead of time before it turns into the mass chaos of templated emails. I think that it's much easier to address things beforehand instead of after. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of discontinuing the issuance of proclamations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, we had a motion.
We had a motion and a second.
And a second.
We had both.
No, she never tabled it.
No, she.
Was Nolte and Dr. Allen?
Uh huh. Roll call, yeah.
I thought the whole point of that discussion was to allow you to make a motion at the end. I thought that's what the clarification was. So, Mr. Bridges, if you.
Yes, we've, we've already had a motion and a second.
So we need to vote.
And, and that was the discussion.
So we're voting on it.
But Ms. Miller was directed to withhold her motion.
Correct. So if she wanted to make a motion to table, she could make that motion at this point?
Correct.
It would need majority vote.
At the length of time and the, and the comments of my colleagues, we are not going to pursue with my motion, and we'll go ahead and vote on this, Mr. Hyde.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. So we will, we will need a roll call vote on this. We will start with District 1.
Aye.
District 2.
Aye.
District 3.
Aye.
District 4. Aye. District 5.
Absolutely no.
District 6.
Aye.
District 7.
No.
The motion carries 5 to 2. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Hyde?
Madam Chair, the next work session and board meeting will be held on September 5, 2023. The work session will begin at 12:30 PM, and the board meeting will begin at 5 PM. The meetings will be held at the district office located at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Bartow.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're not done with our meeting yet. Please do not make comments from the audience. Mr. Bridges?
Request authority to advertise public hearing for student aggression plan on October 24, 2023 during the regular scheduled board meeting.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Would like to pitch you an easy one.
Thank you. All right, and we will go backwards this evening. So Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I apologize, I do have to leave, and I was, I asked to go first. Back to school has been an amazing time for our students. I spend a lot of time at Lake Gibson. I tell people, because they invite me out so much, because Van always has something going on. Those people are, if you didn't see that video or the reel that we made, he brings in the entire band and cheerleading squad to welcome the teachers back, and I'm talking about making people feel comfortable where they work. It's an amazing place to be. I've enjoyed, I have the most new principals in District 7, and I've enjoyed meeting all of them and helping to promote their work in the schools. I did visit, I think, my smallest school, which is Auburn Dell Central, and even with the small campus, they're doing amazing work there for those students. I wanted to clarify something, since it's misquoted already, and I like to have things on tape for legal reasons. When I talk about listening to people in the community, I want to highlight the people that are in our schools that are retired, that are reading to our students, that are hanging out with our kids after school and after-school programs. My son went all the way up, I think we started at Dr. Annie Roberts in Sleepy Hill, we ended up at Wendell Watson in Lake Gibson, and going back after he was out of school, I think gave me the most joy. So if you have time, there's lots of programs available for you to really, really dig into our schools. You can Google numbers. I don't think that gives you a, a proper, I can guarantee it doesn't give you a proper outlook of what's happening in our schools. Every elementary school needs a SAC member, so you're more than welcome to join the SACs. Maybe you used to be a DJ. We have schools that have proms, and we, they need music, you know, they need extracurricular activities. The fact that Jen Lay in a real estate company, no, no for her fact, her kids attended a charter school, but she invested in one of our public schools, and I think that brings more joy to people than anything. So I'm not saying that it doesn't matter. You're, you're welcome to look at my financials, talk about tax returns, whoo, don't ask my husband about our quarterlies. I think everybody invests in this county, but the people that put in what we call sweat equity with our kids, I think are the most valuable. So I appreciate you doing that, whether you're a retired teacher, or whether you are, you have kids who you're empty nesting and you need something to do, we'll find you a school and a place to fit in. And I just appreciate the people that are doing that on their own. They're getting to know the real needs of schools. Not that we don't need people reading, but there's some really intricate things needed. The fact that we connected a, a young real estate group to IT needs that they never imagined would be able to be met, to see those kids and the work they're doing, I know that brings them a lot of, a lot of joy. So if you're not plugged into a school, go ahead and drive by the nearest one and stop by the office and ask how you can be. As long as you're not a convicted felon, you're more than welcome to fill out a volunteer application, and we will put you to work in our schools, because that's what we desperately need. I can quote numbers all day long, but until we have enough people put in sweat equity, I don't know how much we're going to be able to improve just on what we're doing alone. Our teachers are overworked and underpaid, and so are our staff members. So even if you just want to drop off some baked goods and say, good job, I think that you will see, you will see the work going on in the school, and you'll see how much people appreciate you and the time spent. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair. We've had a very long meeting. I appreciate my absent, letting me leave just a few minutes early. You have my cell phone, my email is public, and if you'd like to speak with me after this meeting, I'm more than welcome to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Sharpless?
Sure, so I'm going to make a very short comment. I just want to say that this upcoming Monday is the 60th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. I feel like this is a great opportunity for our students to learn, and I hope many of our teachers make teachable moments from this anniversary. As I reflect on the words spoken by Dr. King, I hope the divis, divisiveness in our community can be healed. One quote I would like to highlight from him, well, one thing I would like for us to learn from that speech is that, "We do not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup of bitterness and hatred." So please, please, let's, let's work together. I, I care deeply about our students, I care deeply about our staff, and I'm going to stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Ms. Fields?
I just wanted to thank all of our employees for supporting United Way, and the impact that each of our employees is giving to so many organizations that are in need of helping to make our community a better place. And United Way is, is, is probably one of the best investments that anyone can make, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that United Way has a very tedious process when you apply, because Girls Inc. of Lakeland, where I am also a, a part of, we go through that process, and they hold us accountable, and we have outcomes, and we have to prove that we're worthy of getting contributions to United Way, so the money is well-spent in helping a lot of people's lives. And I wanted to commend Superintendent Hyde. I don't think the superintendent's office has ever been a part of the celebration with having placement, so that says a lot for you, leading your staff, and understanding the importance and the value of giving back. So congratulations to, to your department, as well as all the other departments and schools that we recognize today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Nolte?
Thanks, everybody, for attending tonight. It helps everybody, I believe, to get on the same page, and if not, we're going to pull together and make this a great year. Justin, appreciate your context about, comments about the great Dr. Martin Luther King. I was blessed to get to every school in the last two weeks to introduce the principals to my, one of my favorite food groups, donuts. And luckily, every office seemed to be very nice and comfortable, and I hope that soon every school is going to be blowing some nice cool air. I'm sure they're working on it, and again, let's all work together and get on the same page, and just make this a great year, and let's get our grades way up there and just make this a real showplace or a, or a beautiful schoolhouse on the hill. And stay connected, get to your schools, volunteer, read to your children or grandchildren, and be a, be a person that the, the kids are going to look up to and say, I remember that, I remember that teacher, I remember that parent, I remember how nice and kind they were and how they treated everybody with respect, even though there may be differences. Let's all keep up the good work and treat each other with respect, and thanks for coming. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is late, and, and respect to everyone who's here, I will decline a report and save my information for next time.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Dr. Allen?
And I've got a long, long list, but.
And I've got a long, long list, but I won't go through them all.
You guys can't see his list, but it is really-
It really is so long. There's been so many things. But yeah, the back-to-school bashes were amazing. I just think of all the community partners that stepped up. You know, WFLA, News Channel A, Spectrum Bay News Nine. They were out covering the great things happening at Jesse Keen in regards to the back-to-school bash. I just think about our annual summer commencement ceremony. There were several board members that took part in that. And these students finished strong and gained the recognition that they deserve. I wanted to say heartfelt thanks to Assistant Superintendent Rob Davis and the Transportation Division. Just getting a chance to visit that in-service early on, right before the launch of our massive operation of transporting these students to our schools safely. Incredible when you think about all the staff that builds all kinds of training and really focused on the safety and the well-being of our students. Really appreciate that. Wanted to say congrats to Travis Technical on their automotive collision technology technician program. Basically, the program recently went through a re-accreditation with ASE and they did gain that accreditation. So, and I said this earlier today, if you've tried to have a car repair lately, you know the shortage we're experiencing in this area is very real. And then on a similar note to that, I spoke earlier, especially as it relates to our AC issues happening around our schools. We definitely want to have a comfortable space for our teachers and our students. And, you know, I apologize to the first-year teacher that was displaced and moved to the cafeteria. I just had a concern for that and I recognize from an empathy standpoint, the struggle there. I am grateful to our staff that worked tirelessly to address these concerns, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the transparent communication from your team. The extensiveness of that communication. It's been extremely thorough. And I mentioned this earlier today, that this should be a call to invest more into our trade academies at Ridge and Travis. These are critical areas that need more attention, especially as it relates to training the next generation of AC technicians. A couple other things, but I'll just skip to my quote. This is from the book entitled "The Vanishing Word" by Dr. Art Hunt, who was one of my mentors. And he says, "Writing is permanent and writing is portable. However, digital communication is fleeting. It can easily disappear. It can easily be manipulated. It can be forgotten." So that's why we write with a pencil. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your pencil quote. I, as we move into our non-agenda items, sorry, our public comments on non-agenda items, I am going to forego my comments in exchange for a brief five-minute recess. We've been going for about, for a little over two hours now again, so I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to use the restroom and stretch for a moment. So we will be back at nine o'clock. Thank you all so much for obliging me with a quick restroom break. All right, first for, next up will be our items that are not on the agenda for vote this evening. Just as before, to register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left and you will hear a beep when the time has concluded. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in accordance with school board policy. First up will be Stephanie Yocum and on deck is Connie Ferguson.
I'm Stephanie Yocum, the president of the Polk Education Association. You guys have a special treat tonight because I normally don't talk at these meetings anymore and you get to hear me twice tonight. So things must be really hitting the fan. And so, and I also declare and proclaim that tomorrow will be AC Day for all classrooms, as it should be. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to talk about the AC issues we've been having systemically across the district since teachers have come back August 3rd. I do want to uplift our Ask Me Brothers and Sisters first because the AC techs and the maintenance teams that are on the ground, working as fast as they can, are the real heroes tonight, trying to get things working as fast as they can. And our teachers and our parents and our support staff, and I'm sure our building administrators, appreciate everything. The issue is not with them. The issue is twofold and that's why we filed the grievance. We were informally communicating with the district to try to resolve these issues as fast as they were coming into us. Because as soon as teachers came back on August 3rd, our phones were ringing off the hook because ACs were down across the district. We still have 309 classrooms that do not have working AC. And that's just the tier one. There are still some that are not cooling appropriately that are 79 and maybe under, and that's considered working okay right now, which is still unacceptable. I'm really mad that this has gotten to this point because we have a good relationship with our district. And to feel that we had to go to a formal grievance to get things resolved really does anger me. And it wasn't until we filed our formal grievance that all of a sudden overtime was approved for our AC techs. All of a sudden, you know, they were working on getting contractors and contracted companies to come and help our AC techs. Because, I don't know if you guys know this, but there are eight perpetual AC tech vacancies that the district has not been able to fill in years. For a district our size, that is unacceptable. And so the grievance isn't just about getting emergency relief and immediate relief to our classrooms so that teaching and learning conditions can be cool and comfortable for student success. This is about changing policy and procedure moving forward so that this does not continue to happen again and again, year after year. And so I urge the district to look, as part of our grievance, to look at and change their policies so that classrooms aren't hot all summer and that the second teachers come back, we figure out that it's broken. You know, setting the temperatures to 72, while we might disagree with that, you should go walk some of those classrooms that are 72 degrees. And it feels not like 72 in here. It feels a little bit cooler. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Thank you, Ms. Yocum. Connie Ferguson. Connie Ferguson. Last call, Connie Ferguson. Next is Bonnie Patterson James.
Air conditioning and ethics seem to be a problem in our Polk County School Board right now. Why is that? Ethics examines the racial, the rational justification for our moral judgments. It studies what is morally right or wrong, just or unjust. It encompasses being alert to racial prejudice and discrimination. Whether I voted for you or not is irrelevant. You were elected to represent and support all and be morally right. How can we trust you to lead when you are allowing Rick Nolte to continue as a leader? Is it because our governor endorsed him that he will face no criminal charges? It is a felony and he has admitted to such. In May, I was maliciously pursued and arrested over 1.7 ounces of clean cotton, not campaign fraud. Have you had your mugshot taken? Have you been fingerprinted or strip searched? No. If Rick Nolte would like to show his integrity and moral compass, he should step down and resign his position. In Rick Nolte's words, "Let's just get along and put our children first." And yet, you want to end and further divide us and minimize the diversity in our community. Each of you that voted to end the proclamation should be ashamed of yourselves for limiting education through diversity. Shame on you, Superintendent Hyde, for creating this problem and choosing to do it over Pride Month and your personal beliefs. You created this. How are you, Superintendent Hyde, gonna bring us all back together when you've already said pride would be acknowledged in October? So now we're just not gonna acknowledge it at all? Polk County has a heat index of over 100 degrees since my sisters went back to school teaching. I can't imagine working with 30 children in the heat, cranky. There's no learning going on, but I bet your offices are comfortable because it feels great in here. You cannot learn nor work in 85-degree-plus temperatures. It makes you physically ill and yet we expect our students and staff to perform at their peak. We are now ranked lower than most of our Florida communities, counties. What are you gonna do? You heard from the teachers. The parents are calling. It's not right. And why wasn't this addressed in the summer before students returned? Not the week that teachers returned and over 200 work orders put in. Shame on you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, and you're gonna have to help me with your last name again. Elizabeth Resmuzan? Rasmuzan, I'm so sorry. And then on deck is Bernard Wells. Rasmuzan.
Good evening again, school board members. My name is Elizabeth Rasmuzan and I'm a high school teacher here in Polk County. I come here tonight to talk about the ongoing AC issues that are at many of our schools. The district says that this happens every year and it's normal. But what they failed to mention is that the air conditioning is actually shut off during the summer and on the weekends during the school year. This creates a plethora of problems, including doors warping to the point where they don't open and close. In fact, I experienced this firsthand at my own school when I got stuck in the bathroom for five minutes due to a warped door. So that was fun. Thankfully, that situation's been fixed, but it shouldn't have happened in the first place. Another issue that occurs due to no AC in the summer is persistent mold conditions in many of our campuses. This destroys expensive textbooks and can contribute to many adverse health conditions for our students, our faculty, and for our staff. Finally, I'd like to say that standing up and speaking out is not divisive. It's part of being in a democratic society. I urge you to listen to our faculty and staff members as they ask for you to make changes in how we approach this AC issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rasmuzan. Bernard Wells. Bernard Wells and on deck is Rhea McKinney.
Good evening. My name is Bernard Wells. You guys have been given some points that I'm gonna address tonight. I was asked by Lisa Miller to- I was asked by Lisa Miller to offer evidence of things that I've been bringing before this board over the last nine months, but tonight, I'm here to offer some receipts. Per systemic state complaint, the district specifically failed to implement specially-designed instruction and related services in accordance with students' IEPs. The district also failed to identify, locate, evaluate, and determine eligibility for students, and failed to follow the required procedures for developing and implementing initial IEPs. It is obvious that this current ESE administration, including its superintendent, do not know the federal and state requirements regarding provision of services. I have previously begged this board to further investigate the decision and actions that led to this systemic complaint that cannot be appealed with DOE. The district received the money, but the students did not receive the services. Again, where is the money? The students are waiting. Shame on all of you. Since we're talking about the failures of the superintendent and the new ESE administration, there is also a communication from DOE regarding the comprehensive coordinated early intervention services. Polk has been identified as having a disproportionality with discipline related to in-school suspension of Black African-American students for more than 10 days, over-identification of students with disability in specific disability categories, placement of students with disability in particular educational setting, and disciplinary action which include in-school, out-of-school suspension and expulsion. This perpetuates the school-to-prison pipeline that I mentioned in a previous board meeting. Because of this disproportionality, Polk is required to set aside 15% of their IDEA funds, roughly $3.9 million, to address the causes of this disproportionality in the 23-24 school year. I have repeatedly spoken to this board about mistreatment of African-American women in leadership roles within the district, which is now seemingly impacting our African-American student. This board cannot continue to ignore these facts. Per a public records request from DOE, the total number of state complaints and due process filings more than doubled from the 21-22 to 22-23 school year, showing a record-high number of individuals in systemic state complaints. The data shows that from 2018-19 to 2021-22, under the previous ESE administration, the numbers of complaint never reached a level that are now seen with an addition of four ESE administrators and an ESE attorney. The data speaks for itself. The superintendent and the current ESE administration are a liability to this district.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Next is Rhea McKinney, and on deck is Douglas.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Attorney Bridges, Superintendent Hyde, I'm Rhea McKinney, a Polk County Public School educator retired from the schoolhouse, but not from education. I am grateful to the board and to the superintendent who support our employees. The Florida Constitution in Article 9, Section 1 states in part, and I quote, "The education of children is a fundamental value to the people of the state of Florida. It is therefore a paramount duty of the state to make adequate provision for the education of all children residing within its borders." It goes on to proclaim that adequate provision allows students to obtain a high-quality education. In Polk County, our public schools include students with a multitude of cultural backgrounds, faith beliefs, and lifestyles. Every student in our school should be respected, honored, and taught true facts. Teaching truth is not indoctrination. Teaching truth is high-quality education. Teaching comes with pressures, including but not limited to lesson planning, lesson preparation, student behavior, grading students' work, administrative paperwork, required meetings, often unreal expectation from students, parents, and administrators and community members, low pay, and state laws with ambiguous terminology that restrict the teaching of true facts. Together, these pressures and others make the teaching of today's students an extremely high-stress job. It is therefore imperative that the school board and school administration, from assistant principals up to and including the superintendent, continue to make it known that they appreciate and support the men and women delivering truth each day to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas, and on deck is Cassandra Gibson.
When I was 16 years old, I visited my grandparents after school, as I often did. My grandfather had not looked me in the eye the entire visit. I didn't think anything of it. My grandmother wasn't acting any differently. She historically had a better poker face. On TV, a news clip showed that a murder of a gay man was now being investigated as a hate crime. Without looking away from the TV, my grandfather says to me, and I quote, "I could never kill, as it's against God's commandments. But those who do kill homosexuals are doing God's work." I would not find out until the next day, when confronted by my mother, she had been working the night before, with tears in her eyes, inability to walk, and in-between sobs, asking me what she did wrong. I would find out that the day, the morning before, I was viciously outed to my family. It was a year and a half later, in that same dining room where we watched TV, that my grandfather, during a little session of at-home conversion therapy, me talking back, long story, punches me across that table. Now, recent studies have shown that in Generation Z, 19.7% are LGBTQ+. One in five. Now, if you want to look at the graph of left-handedness, the history of left-handedness, you'll see pretty much this exact same thing. Just over the generations, it just keeps getting better. Why? Or keeps getting more populated. Why? Because they're not being hunted down by crazy religious people. Now, according to this same study, 11.2% of millennials, queer, 3.3% of Gen X, 2.7% of baby boomers, and 1.7% of the silent generation. Now, this is not surprising to anyone who's familiar with things such as the history of left-handedness or the diversity of this community. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, asexual, intersex, two-spirit, these are all separate identities. Now, you can go and say lesbian, gay, bisexual, asexual, all sexual, romantic identities. And then transgender? Gen, too many people just see transgender as mentally ill gays. Too many people do not understand that there is a separation between your sex, your sexuality, and your gender. The gender structure that we work on today is still based in the, is still based in white supremacist, British colonization. We do not recognize the diversity of our cultures.
Thank you. Cassandra Gibson? I don't believe she's here. Glenda White? And on deck is Royal Brown.
Hi, my name is Glenda White, Winter Haven resident. Lisa Miller continues to issue hateful comments from work session. Her latest comment, "We need to listen to people who have students in school, because a lot of the things we're listening to are from people who have no interests, no vested interest in the outcome, because they do not have children in our schools." So, I thank you for this and hope we can continue the conversation. I would like to provide a rebuttal to that statement. Every single resident who works and pays taxes in Polk County has a vested interest in the education of our children. I recently spoke to a friend of mine who is having trouble hiring people at the entry level because they can't read a tape measure. Stay in your own lane, Polk School Board. You're failing our kids. Lisa Miller's salary is paid by the taxes of the people in this county. She needs to remember that her job is in service to the people of our county, not berating everyone she doesn't agree with. Lisa Miller should be removed from her seat on this board if she keeps up her hateful commentary about Polk citizens. I'd like to add that we, who according to her, do not have current kids currently in the schools or vested interests, by her definitions, stood in the heat today for over an hour, as we did last month, to attend this meeting, to endure the insults of people, disrespectful children, because we care about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Royal Brown, and on deck is Leah Fisher.
I want to thank you for your vote tonight. I think it was the right vote. I also want to correct a misconception that a lot of people seem to have, and that is Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Independence Day, Flag Day, Thanksgiving are all national holidays authorized by Congress. They are not...
Sorry, that was not for you.
They are not proclamations, as it was intimated here tonight. I'd also like to say that it was said that words hurt. Yeah, they do. And here's some of the words I heard tonight, directed towards me and about 52 other family-loving, God-loving patriots who attended this meeting. I heard that we were small-minded. I heard that we were Nazis. Okay? I heard that, you know, we basically, we don't care about children. And all that is just totally false. And quite frankly, I've been coming to these school boards now, meetings now, for a couple years, and I'm pretty tired of all the hatred directed towards those of us that God, that love our God, love our country, and love students, while the rest of these folks just get away with it. Tonight, sitting behind me, while y'all were discussing what you were going to vote on about the proclamations, there was incessant talk, cutting you down. You don't know that because you're sitting up there and you can't hear what's going on out there in the audience. But there needs to be some tightening up here. We're the ones being civil. Not them. Here? See, that's what I'm saying. And it gets a little tiring. We're going to continue to come to those school boards, you're not going to run us off. Okay? Now, another thing, a couple procedural things that I would recommend that you all look at. Number one, this venue here, this location, is becoming inadequate for the large groups of people that are coming here to talk. You need, you need to go, either go back to the place on 98, or go back to what you used to do when I was teaching in Polk County. The school boards were held over here in the Bartow High School auditorium. With this venue here, you're outgrowing it, and it's going to continue to get worse, so please look at that. You need a protocol about what's happening out here outside your building as people are lining up. Some of us were here at 3:00.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is Leah Fisher, and on deck is Donna Windsor. Leah, Leah Fisher? And Donna Windsor? Anita Carson?
I signed up tonight for the off-agenda item to talk about AC. Found it interesting that someone decided to point out that they stood outside for an hour because they care about kids, and that's awesome, it's hot outside. Our teachers spend eight hours a day in heat with no AC, and they're all in this room, waiting to continue to talk to y'all about the problems that are really impacting our schools. The majority of people that were here to speak...
Please shut the doors in the back.
Close the door.
In or out?
The majority that were here to speak against the proclamations went home as soon as that vote was done. But the people who spoke for the proclamations are still here because they still care about kids and what they have to face in their classrooms. I think that your decision today to completely eradicate proclamations does a disservice to every person in this county. I was especially appalled at the quoting of Dr. King right after removing a Black History proclamation. So, I'll quote from Letter from Birmingham Jail, "We are here because injustice is here." There's one group of people that showed up that said, "We don't like this group, so take the proclamations away." And then the people who wanted proclamations showed up and said, "We want you to see everyone." Those are not two sides of a divisive coin. There's one group that's being divisive, which is why we've never had an issue in 20 years, and there's one group saying, "We all deserve to be seen." This was wrong. This was incredibly wrong. And I'm surprised at some of you that I thought had better logical skills in that. So, I appreciate the two of you that stood up. I appreciate you standing up when a full community of people are just wanting to be seen. So, thank you.
Caitlin Jones? Caitlin Jones, and then on deck is Ruby B.
So, I have been a teacher at Polk County School Board for eight years. This is my first-ever school board meeting, and this is also the first week I have ever joined the union. But I am not here to complain, because that's what I got Stephanie for. All right? I am here for solutions, because I don't complain without a solution, because that would just be complaining and nobody's going to pay attention. One of our solutions, and I believe it was you, Mr. Allen, it wasn't one of your essays that you read tonight, but you did mention that we have trade schools. And I do not understand that if we are graduating people from our trade schools, specifically our AC HVAC program, why are we not funneling them into our empty positions? If they are good enough and qualified enough to pass our certifications, then why are we not offering them some type of contract? Why are we not putting our students first and offering them a career? I do not understand why we have empty positions when we have students in a classroom that have Polk County School Board hands-on opportunities. That is my biggest thing. Why are we not investing in ourselves? At my school, we invest in our kids every single day, because sometimes we're the only hug they get. It is appalling that you guys do not invest in us. If you know every single year, you come back to over 200-ish work orders on air conditioners, why are we not outsourcing and having every single air conditioner serviced over the summer? Every homeowner is supposed to take care of their air conditioner, and having it serviced is one thing, but classrooms, my classroom specifically, has gone four to six months at a time without a new air filter. And when we are told just to brush it off with your broom, that is not acceptable.
Thank you. Ruby, and then on deck is Bishop Mincy.
Man, it is cold in this room. Too bad kids can't experience that good old freeze-to-death-in-the-classroom tradition. But anyway, I'm here to speak about concerns related to PragerU being approved by the state for use in the classrooms despite it quite literally being founded with biased and bigoted intent to be used as propaganda. Their content includes things such as claiming slavery is a good thing and climate change isn't real despite us literally experiencing it this summer. So, I'm asking at the Polk County School Board to not overwrite my rights as a parent to have my kids access proper public education and not allow this propaganda in our local classrooms, because I am raising my kids to be anti-racist, anti-begitry, and... and to have critical thinking skills and to not be the kind of person who spends their senior citizen years crying about the existence of people who are different from them in public meetings. But here I am, having to teach adults these things too. They will learn the brutal facts of history. They will learn to celebrate groups that are in cultures, even if they are not part of those groups. Because these things are only divisive if you're an evil, brainwashed, and hateful person. A few years ago, I thought I would only have to worry about school shootings when my kids went to school, which I shouldn't even have to worry about that. But now I have to worry about so much more. Now I have to worry about white supremists and decisions being made by someone who can't even follow basic laws about campaign contributions. I shouldn't have to ask that in 2023, that a school's not being racist, homophobic, trans, and it is infuriating, and I'm so, so beyond. People who start [BLEEP] and start discriminating, crying, "Why can't we get along?" You're why we can't get along, Rick. You start racist, homophobic [BLEEP], and this [BLEEP] needs to end.
Bishop Mincy.
I have come to be your enemy because I told you the truth. I told you the judgment was coming to the district. One woman took prayer out of the school. One man created the problem that you have tonight in Tallahassee, Florida. Nobody stood up against woke. Woke is the problem. Woke is the problem. Christian people would talk. They know God have allowed woke to mess their minds up. And we have multiple problems, and it ain't going to get no better. This is not going to get no better. This is going to get progressively worse because the Bible said, "When they knew Him as God, they glorified Him not as God, and they became vain in their imagination, and their foolish hearts were darker, and they worshiped the creature more than the Creator." Anytime you put God out, you can get ready for hell. It's going to destroy, amen, this nation is going to be destroyed because of the stuff that Christian folk, they talk, they talk, but don't walk the walk. Everybody can sound good, make themselves look good. It's a right way and it's a wrong way. Black history, y'all talk about proclamation. That man didn't want it to be told to our children. Our children need to know the history. Know what happened. Know why there are different colored people in the world. Know why somebody did that. Tell the truth. The truth will set you free. That's the only thing will set you free. When you look at the skin color of a child, and you're going to go to school and you're going to try to make him feel like he ain't this and he ain't that, two people got together. And that's why they look like they look. We got issues and we got problems, and we don't want to face the problem. We're going to duck around the problem, and you want to try to patch it up and try to fix it? It will never be fixed until you walk up and face the truth. Face it. Look truth in the eye and say, "Truth, I accept you." Because the truth will set us free tonight. In our schools, in our communities, in our churches, wherever we go, if we learn to do what's right, right is going to win every time, every time. Now, you can get ready, amen, mark my word, do what you want to do. But the Bible says that judgment was going to come. And I'm telling you, I told you all it was going to come. So all of this ruckus that we had here tonight, it's almost 10 o'clock. I'm supposed to be asleep.
Thank you, Bishop Mincy. With no further business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.